I'm recording. So.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the June 23rd, 2022 Six Fork Lady Board. We're here in the board's slide room's office, board people's office. I do believe that we are absent one board member this evening.
I believe so.
Under our own self. She.
Mr. McLean.
She.
Mr. McLean. Mr. McLean should be on his way.
Mr. McLean is on his way. I'm going to read a statement that I have to tell you with this climate game, I'm sorry that we need to read. 2022, we have to be reminded to be nice to each other, so I'm going to read this prepared statement. The Six Fork Lady Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings, and we ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support or respect our community. Thank you. With that being said, if you want to review this by Zoom, all the information is online, you should go ahead and do that. And may I make a motion?
Some.
Steve. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All favor.
I.
Alright.
What do you mean? To stop with that force, continue public hearing of a stormwater in a site like in a public driveway of 533 Countryway. Would you be interested in yours?
Hey, for the record, Steve New Yorkman, he representing Marvell Holmes on this. I think that we're at the point now where John's on, good, I see you, John. I think we've got all the issues addressed as far as the stormwater is concerned and the common driveway. And we, the last meeting, we went through all the findings of fact, which took some time. Karen and I actually got together and made a few corrections, which were no big deal, there was nothing really substantive or anything. So I don't know if you want to start by going back through the findings of fact with the corrections that were made. I think everybody's got a highlighted copy.
Yeah.
Just a few words that were changed, I think, nothing major. And I think pretty much the purpose of tonight was to try to go through the conditions. And I would say I want to start out by actually thanking Karen, because we've actually had, I know she's busy as can be, and we've had a great week. I think we've probably spent more time together this week than we have in the last year. Trying to, trying to make sure that this stuff was, was getting done directly. And I think we've come to a full agreement, from our part anyway. And I think it's just up to the board to go through and see if the conditions are adequate to guarantee that this is going to protect groundwater.
So, Mr. New Yorkman, I did watch a lot of conservation last night after we went to another meeting, I watched the subject.
I can't even remember, it was like on.
Well, I have to say that I know that we find the stormwater odorous, but it's nice to hear from the conservation commission that we did our job, we did a good job, and they, that it was well, since it's going downhill, it's tough to control the stormwater. So it's nice to be validated, but thank you.
This, we understand this will not be an easy project, and, and the process has taken a while, we all know that. But I think that we've got the safeguards in, and I think as well as working with the town with DPW and Karen, we're going to watch this one very closely and make sure that it's a good project.
We appreciate that, because Karen works really hard to make sure that you have a really good project, a product, gives you your client who's so appreciative, and it works for everybody. Good for the town, good for the client, good overall, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so I just want to say that you are sent version seven of the draft decision. What I did after the last meeting was any, any comments that you had to the findings of fact, I put, I made two changes and put them in red. So everybody, I explained that in the email when I sent it, so the changes were in red. Now, I believe last time we did not vote the findings of fact, so they will have to be voted tonight. Since Steve missed two meetings, Steve is not a voting member on this, so. We have, we have four, we have four people, it's not a special permit, so it doesn't have to be a super majority. But Steve can certainly comment. Alright, so, does any, I mean, I don't know how you want to perceive, but I think the findings of fact are as, I made changes, and I added one new finding of fact number six, which I add in all stormwater permits.
So shall we begin to read?
I don't think we have, I don't think we need to read.
I think we have the findings of fact.
I mean, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't.
Don't you all agree with that? Findings of fact that are okay, as we see.
Yeah, just look.
Mr. Frich is looking?
They're, they're minor, actually.
Yep. Trying to get everybody's, you know, comments in here as, as you, we had marked up last time.
I know why you could not find what I wanted, because it got re-labeled, it's now number seventeen.
That's conditions, we're not on.
I know that. I'm well aware.
We'll get to that one.
Yep.
Alright, Mrs. Lambert. So we also have the findings of fact? So.
Okay.
Could you make a motion, please?
Uh, I'll just read what we have there. Based upon testimony presented at the public meetings and public hearing, application and plans, minutes of the meetings, documents, and comments submitted.
Well, no, wait, we have to, we have to vote on findings of fact.
I'm reading, I'm making a motion.
That's what he's doing.
Comments submitted in the findings of fact, I move to approve, say, right? Oh, no.
No, no.
Sorry.
I vote the findings of fact.
Yeah, I moved to, I moved to make the following findings of fact.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. So who?
I would go to the.
Then, then it's a matter of, if, if you want to.
Uh, we all, we both, oh.
All favor.
All right, bye.
Mr. McLean.
Bye.
All favor, thank you, yes.
So, we need to do, we can do, we can do the conditions, you have to, like, construct the videos, you have to read them, and that's where you start getting.
Right, that's, sorry, I started. Based upon testimony presented at the public meetings and public hearing, application and plans, minutes of the meetings, documents, and comments submitted in the findings of fact, I move to approve. Site plan administrators review for a common driveway and stormwater permit at 533 Countryway, subject to the following conditions. One, common driveway shall be constructed according to the plans entitled Common Driveway Plan in the Town and City of Massachusetts 533 Countryway, dated July 26th, 2021, with revisions through May 20th, 2022, consisting of two sheets and stormwater permit in the Town and City of Massachusetts 533 Countryway dated July 26th, 2021, with revisions through May 20th, 2022, consisting of seven sheets prepared for Kent Marvell, owned to LLC by Ross Engineering Corporation Incorporated, or Company Incorporated, stormwater report and application for situational stormwater permit for 533 Countryway dated July 19th, 2021, with revisions through May 23rd, 2022, inclusive of all supplementary information, including mounting analysis, post-construction calculation, certification of no degradation to groundwater quality, cover letters, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection information on hydro system, hydro storm separator, 50% TSS removal rate, calculations received May 23rd, 2022, and all cover letters with submittals and as further revised to meet these conditions. A complete set of the latest revised plans with revision dates and calculations consistent with peer review engineering comments shall be submitted prior to a building permit. Copy of the approved plan and conditions shall be kept on the site at all times during construction. Two, lots one and two shall access over the common driveway as depicted on the plans. No further extensions or attachments of any other roadways or common driveways or other access to any other lots besides those created by the plan shall be permitted. The common driveway shall remain private in perpetuity and shall never be considered for acceptance as a town road, and that all maintenance and repair of the common driveway and drainage facilities shall be the responsibility of the owners of the property. A note shall be placed on the plan indeed for each lot serviced by the common driveway, starting or stating the above with proof provided to the planning board prior to the occupancy of the first unit. The applicant shall mean the current applicant and all its successors in interest. This site plan review and stormwater permit shall last within two years from the date of its issuance, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of appeal under Mass General Law's Chapter 40A from the grant thereof unless substantial use or construction is commenced prior to that time, in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 9. Planning board may extend such period for quit cause shown upon receiving a written request from the applicant prior to the expiration of said period, which shall provide a detailed description of quit cause necessitating an extension. The planning board office must receive written notification at least one week prior to any change of ownership of the property occurring during construction. Four, copies of this approval, including the plans and common driveway easements, shall be provided to subsequent owners, who shall be advised of the need for maintenance of the stormwater system for the operation and maintenance plan, and the need to retain the grade even a lot as approved. Prior to the transfer of the property, the owner shall provide to the subsequent owner and the planning office an inspection report certified by a professional engineer showing compliance with the operation and maintenance plan. The planning office must receive written notification at least one week prior to any change in ownership of the property during construction. Five, there shall be no further division or subdivision of any lot shown on the plan for purposes of constructing additional units or buildings. There shall be no further expansion of any building or previous service on the site. No swimming pools are allowed without further review. No additional dwelling units shall be added. No additional expansion of the limited work is allowed without further approval of the situational planning board. Six, the applicant shall consent to allow members of the town official, members and town officials from the planning board and other persons acting under the planning board or its agents to enter upon lands and carry out such surveys and inspections as may be deemed necessary in place to maintain monuments. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their effort to verify that the layout, design, and construction work are satisfactory in form to the town's specifications and requirements of the board. Seven, prior to the pre-construction conference, the applicant must obtain all necessary approvals and meet all requirements from the Board of Health, BOH, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, Building Department, and Department of Public Works, DPW, and these shall be deemed conditions of the planning board approval. Any state federal permits must be obtained if required and supplied to the planning board prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, and are also deemed to be conditions of the planning board approval. This includes, includes an NPDES permit. Eight, construction of this common driveway is subject to the planning board's approval of scenic road permit and any conditions imposed by the planning board in connection with approval. Nine, construction shall meet all requirements of the situational bylaw. All contractors are responsible for all conditions shown in the plans and in the written decisions. Ten, no new in-ground irrigation systems shall be allowed to connect to the town's water distribution system or in any manner using municipal water. In accordance with this policy rule, all irrigation systems installed in the situ must be supplied by onsite sources at the expense of the property owner. Clients who are violating this rule may be levied on homeowner as well as the system installer. Eleven, this epic system shall meet all the requirements of Title V and 310 CMR 22, including your reserve area. Any changes to the plan necessitated by compliance with any BOH provision requires notification of the town planner to determine if the change is significant or requires further input from the planning board. Twelve, no work is allowed beyond the limited work slash tree line without approval of the planning board. Entire amendment of work is to be staked with erosion control during construction. Fines shall be imposed for disturbance beyond the limited work, and any disturbance beyond the limited work will be subject to full restoration with a restoration plan to be submitted and to, submitted to and approved by the planning board. Thirteen, the post-construction operation and maintenance plan shall be strictly adhered to so that 90% total suspended solid TSS is achieved at all times. An annual report is to be provided to the planning board yearly by June 30th, certifying all required maintenance that has been completed per the plan. Fourteen, all utilities shall be placed underground to the extent practical or agreed upon with the planning board. Fifteen, the planning board agrees to a waiver of the landscape plan required under Section 751.3 of the zoning bylaw as the type and size of trees for the scenic road departments are shown on the plan of the applicant as committed to landscaping the properties. Sixteen, the recharge chambers shall be installed to have the bottom elevation a minimum of three feet above seasonal high groundwater elevations. Stormwater during construction as well as after construction is not allowed to increase in greater volume to adjacent properties of the street or option. Seventeen, a stabilized construction entrance shall be installed upon removal of the wall immediately on the site and shall be maintained throughout construction during tracking onto the road. Eighteen, no sediment, including silty water, shall be allowed to leave the site during construction and construction of the new retaining wall, sidewalk, and landscaping in the countryway right of way. All work in the right of way shall be done in accordance with DPW standards and DPW memorandum of April 20th, 2022, DPW letter of April 13th, 2022, and DPW memorandum of June 9th, 2021, attached and are part of this permit. DPW and the town planner must be consulted prior to any work in the right of way. A scheduled work must be provided and a minimum of five business days, days that is required. Common driveway agreement. Nineteen, a common driveway agreement shall assign to the owners of lots one and two the responsibilities of cost of maintenance and repair of the common driveway, including snowplowing, as well as the open basin, subsurface infiltration systems, hybrid media filter, swales, and all other drainage devices grading, and all other improvements for stormwater management onsite. The responsibilities of maintenance in the common driveway agreement shall include all requirements of the operation and maintenance plan, which shall be attached to the agreement together with other typical maintenance, such as snowplowing, driver repair, and any capable ground repair. The agreement shall indicate no parking is allowed in the common driveway easement area, and a sign indicating there is no parking must be placed in the easement area. The agreement shall require annual certification to be submitted to the town planner by June 30th yearly by an engineer that stormwater system is being properly inspected and maintained for the operation and maintenance plan. The operation and maintenance plan shall also be provided to the planning board as a standalone document. The standard format for, from the planning office shall be used. The final draft of the agreement shall be provided to the planning board within two weeks of the approval of the site plan review and stormwater permit. The agreement shall be recorded at the registry deeds with the site plan review permit. No pre-construction conference or building permits will issue without a recorded common driveway review. Twenty, any plan changes or changes from the proposed materials shall be submitted to the planning office to determine if the changes are insignificant or require a permit modification approved by the board or town planner. The stormwater management system, including all research chambers and components of the system, house, driveways, grading, and site amenity locations, shall not be changed or expanded without prior written approval of this issuing, of the issuing authority. Expansion includes additional pavement areas. Failure, failure to obtain written approval is a violation of the Town and City of Stormwater bylaw and subject to fines. Twenty-one, the use of pesticides and fertilizers shall be strictly prohibited. Construction. Twenty-two, a pre-construction conference will be required prior to the start of construction, including the planning board's consulting engineer, representative of DPW, the site design engineer, the owner, the site contractor, and the town planner. Twenty-three, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide to the town planner. A, record the planned decision and common driveway agreement at the level of kind of risk, three of D, to provide proof of recording. B, an initial deposit with the town planner of $5,000 under GLC 44 S 53G to secure construction review and inspections by the Town and City of Consulting Engineer. The deposit shall be applied toward the cost of construction inspections for the common driveway. The specific amount provided to the planning department shall be based on the consulting engineer's estimate and shall be subject to amendment from time to time and be supplemented by the applicant as requested. C, the applicant shall provide surety for $10,000 in a form accessible to the planning board prior to the beginning, prior to beginning construction of the common driveway to guarantee completion of the common driveways, drainage systems, site work, landscaping, and cleanup of the site in compliance with the stormwater planning conditions. After the town planners inspected the site and found grading, loming, and seeding, cleanup of earth materials, and construction agreement to be complete along with the as-built approved and a certificate, certificate, certificate of completion issued, these funds shall be returned to the applicant. Additional surety of $60,000 is required for work in the town's right of way. And D, a scheduled construction activities, including approximate dates for installation of erosion control, and other site stabilization features for all phases of the project, and all applicable items in the subdivision rules and regulations 9.1.3 shall be given to the town planner. Temporary drainage measures shall be provided onsite in the initial phase of construction prior to house construction. Twenty-four, the town planner is to be notified when construction begins and when construction is completed. Twenty-five, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide the town planner with permits from the City of DPW for street openings and curb cut. Installation of all water mains and impertinences shall be performed according to the specifications of the DPW Water Division. Any upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the applicant's expense. The consulting engineer along with the town shall review the construction activity to assure compliance with the town's rules and regulations. Twenty-six, the property line and boundary of the limited clearing shall be marked or flagged in the field under the direction of a surveyor and notification given to the town planner and consulting engineer a minimum of five days prior to the start of construction. The property line and limit of clearing shall remain staked in the field throughout construction. Twenty-seven, a stabilized construction entrance must be installed prior to any earth disturbing activities on the site, including but not limited to clearing and rubbing. Twenty-eight, all clearing and earth moving operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures approved by the town planner and shown on the plan are in place. Such control measures shall remain in place until the town planner determines that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. Twenty-nine, any proposed changes in grading and drainage from the approved plan must be reviewed by the town planner and town's consulting engineers to determine if they are materially significant. The applicant shall certify that such changes shall result in no impact on the drainage system. It should not increase runoff onto Countryway, flooding lots, or the rate and volume of the post-conditioned from the pre-development condition. Thirty, all lawn shall have a minimum of six inches of screened lawn. Thirty-one, there shall be no flow to the subsurface systems until the tributary area is stabilized. Thirty-two, no use of hydrants onsite or on adjacent roads offsite is allowed for construction use. A hydrant may be available at the water treatment plant for construction use if water supply allows and permission is obtained from DPW. Thirty-three, the inspections for the, this development will be done in accordance with Section 9.1.3 of the Town and City of subdivision rules and regulations, as modified in the next sentence. The town's consulting engineer shall perform these inspections with cost paid by the applicant. All required inspections shall take place and be inspected by the consulting engineer, including water lines, along with DPW. Weekly reports shall be submitted to the applicant and planning board stating results of all required inspections unless more frequent reports are needed. Forty-eight hours minimum advance notice is required for all inspections. All stormwater recharge structures require inspection of the bottom of the excavation by the consulting engineer. SWP or SWPP inspections for the NPDES permit by the applicant must be submitted after every half inch scar. Thirty-four, construction of the common driveway, site drainage systems, grading, and water systems shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer approved by the planning board, which will certify in writing to the planning board at completion that the driveways, grading, drainage structures, and utilities are constructed in accordance with the approved plans. This certification shall be accompanied by as-built plans signed and stamped by a registered professional land surveyor and a supervising professional engineer. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that access, construction, driveways, grading, installation of drainage structures, and stormwater management features, installation of utilities, and site stabilization are in full compliance with the approved plan's permit. Stormwater system must be functioning in accordance with the design requirements, and the as-built certification must include a statement that any variation in the grade is immaterial and does not materially alter the performance of the stormwater system. All grading and landscaping must be submitted prior to the final as-built submitted. Thirty-five, grade stakes shall be provided for inspection by the consulting engineer prior to the gravel and shall remain for inspection through final paving installation. Thirty-six, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the board's consulting engineer shall inspect the lots and notify the board and building commissioner that the common driveway, grading, drainage, site utility, and stabilization conforms to the show, to that shown on the common driveway stormwater plan. Thirty-seven, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM on weekdays and 8:00 AM on weekends and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction is permitted on Sundays, federal, and legal state holidays. Construction work includes any operation machinery and item of vehicles. The name and phone number of a 24-hour contact shall be provided to the town planner, building department, police department, and Department of Public Works to be used in event of emergency prior to the pre-construction conference. Thirty-eight, there shall be no parking, loading, or unloading of construction equipment, staging, or item of物of goals on Countryway or adjacent public roads during construction unless a police detail is provided, if warranted, as determined by the police department. Thirty-nine, stockpile shall be located as shown in the plans and must be protected with erosion controls, including but not limited to silt socks and temporary material. Forty, construction activities shall be conducted in a workmanlike manner at all times. Noise mitigation and proper dust control shall be taken so that levels conform to mass DED policies. All equipment that emanates sound shall be kept in proper working order through regular maintenance. Street sweeping shall be used to control dust from leaving the site. A wheel wash station may be required to prevent sediment from leaving the site. Blowing dust of degree shall be controlled by the applicant for stabilization, wetting down, or other proper storage and disposal methods. Forty-one, construction activities onsite shall conform to the Town and City of general bylaws. Forty-two, sidelines and countryway shall be maintained for the plans. Forty-three, all construction shall comply with all applicable requirements of the Water Resource Protection District and Section 520 of the zoning bylaw. No finished slope shall exceed four to one. Forty-four, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until both the planning board and building commissioner are satisfied that access, construction of the common driveway, and the installation of necessary utilities are in full compliance with the approved plans and the site plan administrative review. Forty-five, if the drainage system is not performing as designed in condition or stormwater is observed going to affect properties or the country street, the stormwater authority can request necessary mitigation to remedy the situation. This condition survives the issuance of a certificate of completion. Administration, forty-six, this site boundary shall run with the land and be void if it is not recorded at the registered deed within 90 days of the expiration of the appeal period. The application shall provide, the applicant shall provide proof of this report to the planning board prior to construction. Forty-seven, failure to comply with any condition of this permit shall cause it to be deemed invalid.
Would you like a second for the discussion? Please. Second for the discussion.
Mr. New Yorkman. Yes, we all want to change, I would have, and I'm sorry I screwed up on that, is number seventeen. On the, um, provisions. That a stabilize, stabilized construction entrance shall be installed immediately upon removal of the wall on the site and shall be maintained. In other words, transferring that word. Yeah. It would say, um, stabilized construction entrance shall be installed immediately upon removal of the wall.
Um, fifty, the waiver of the landscape plan. We, we never actually voted that, memory serves right, so do we want to?
Yeah.
No, we didn't. We talked about it.
We talked about it, did we vote the waiver?
I think the night that I came up.
No, we, we never voted the waiver, but I put it in this decision, so.
So, that's why, that's why I bring it up, that we want to actually vote the waiver, we want to just bury it in there as a condition.
Not just burying it as a condition, um, this one.
I think just for full disclosure, for future plans that this is required, given that this was a new bylaw.
Yeah, I think.
I, this, this is not a precedent.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be, right, it's not going to be waived.
We just want that together, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to be waived on future, future stormwater issues.
Yeah.
Mr. Frich.
Yeah, I just have a few, um, most editorial issues here. Just got to find them. Number seven. See, capitalized applicant there. Eight, I would sort of modify it to say that any condition imposed by the planning board that can be in connection with such approval, so we're really talking about the, the approval mentioned in this.
I'm not sure what you're saying there.
Say that one again. What can you?
So, it says, construction of this common driveway subject to the planning board's approval of the scenic road permit and any conditions imposed by the planning board in connection with such approval.
I, I would say said approval. Either way. But that's another set of approval.
The next one. Okay, let's see. So, on twenty, he said we got prior written approval of the issuing authority. Is, is that because the planning board is not the issuing authority? Not sure why you use that term.
Change it however, it's.
Well, I would have said.
The planning board, the, the planning board is the issuing, that's already.
Yeah, so I would have just said the planning board.
Okay.
I, I thought there was something else to run on here.
This is on number twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we can change that during the line on the bottom.
Just change it to the planning board.
That, that makes sense, Dave.
And then, other D, uh, twenty-three D. We, at the end, we said temporary drainage measures shall be provided onsite in the initial phase of construction prior to house construction. What happens during house construction?
You can argue the number one.
Uh.
The number is I want.
Twenty-three D. Uh, I guess I'm just saying, shouldn't there still be temporary drainage measures during house construction?
Yes, but I want to make sure, what I'm asking for is temporary drainage. What they oftentimes would like to do is put the erosion control around, do the clearing, and then start the foundation.
What they oftentimes would like to do is put the erosion control around, do the clearing and then start the foundation.
Mm-hmm.
I want temporary erosion control measures prior to that being done. Due to the actual starting of the foundation.
Okay, so do do we say that drainage measures are provided prior to the start of any house construction and shall be made until maintained until whatever.
So.
I mean, whatever, until permanent system is commissioned.
And maintain throughout construction, yes.
Yes.
Can you just think of the word temporary?
Because you have some temporary measures. Yeah, I mean your some your temporary sums, all that kind of stuff.
Right. Number two now.
Temporary drainage measures shall be provided onsite in the initial phase of construction prior to the start of house construction and maintained throughout construction. Maybe I'll try to eliminate one of those construction figures.
And then thirty five. In due fashion of the consulting engineer prior prior to placement of gravel?
Construction term?
Well, prior to gravel is kind of a.
Well, because you gra you gravel the driveway and then you.
Yeah, I said that's construction term.
It's a, yeah, it's a construction term, I guess. But yeah, you could say placing gravel.
They could say placing gravel.
Placing gravel.
And then in thirty seven. I would start the sentence with prior to the preconstruction conference. Common, right? Thirty seven, last sentence is just, it it's the last
Last.
The last.
Okay.
Uh, phrase at the end, prior to the preconstruction conference, I would put that at the beginning of the sentence because it sounds like it's emergency prior to the preconstruction conference.
Do you put that very beginning of thirty seven?
No, beginning of the last sentence.
Exactly. Okay.
That's it.
Okay, good point.
No issues.
Well, this is a public hearing, so if anyone wants to talk to us?
If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand um or turn your camera on and wave at us, we can um take your comments at this time.
Shouldn't we? Sorry, I thought we we had motion on the table, so.
For discussion.
For discussion.
Right, discussion.
You don't have, you don't have, you don't have any, you don't have any public comment.
Yeah.
I'm people, sorry.
During this conference.
So you need a second as many.
I will, I second as a minute. Well. Somebody just.
You seconded.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Yungun.
Hi.
Hi.
Why do you know?
Thank you, and Ben, you must have actually taken the Eleanor Woods speech reading class.
I I don't like wasting time, we all have the word.
I couldn't have done any better than that, that was excellent job running through it, that's not.
I was the clerk when Ho Brothers came in town, so I and for the cell phone power, I was like, you should have read those.
Not an easy thing to do, it's a good job, thank you very much.
Yeah. Excellent.
All the best.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank, I wanna thank Karen again, it was a good job, but we're there. Have a little while.
Okay.
I think we don't need Mr. Chelsea anymore.
No.
No, she can't see John, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, good uh, good luck.
You wanna do the form eight again, right?
Well, do you think that anybody might a little bit, is anybody coming? Yeah.
Oh, this is just to tell you that.
No, to tell you that, oh, change it.
Other people might come on.
Oh, yeah.
Change it to that one. Is she there?
Oh, yeah.
Other people, I mean, do you know people are gonna come on if if we don't know, then maybe we can do some of our administrative stuff.
Yeah, do that, huh?
Um.
Yeah, for your own. I would say they're having people coming in and out. So um, and I did represent some of the names based on who the owners are of the properties, so you might want to wait.
Yes.
Do you want to make this comment?
No, you don't need to.
Alright, so my recommendation is to go to the old business, new business, do 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 some of that stuff, get that out of the way, um.
Will we have to commit as please?
We don't have, we don't have any.
That's easy to tell. So I'm going to.
We're a little behind.
I'm not accounting. I go to a requisition of three hundred forty five dollars to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for eighteen fourth place. Four hundred five dollars to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for three Paco Avenue. And for six hundred ninety six dollars to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for four eighty five countryway residential compound. For one thousand nine hundred fifty seven dollars and fifty cents to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for seventy third way. For one thousand six hundred five dollars to Morrison and Group for peer review services for Seaside and Situate. For one thousand seven hundred two dollars and fifty cents to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for five thirty three countryway. For nine hundred dollars to the barrel for for peer review services for one fifteen, one nineteen Road Street. For thirty dollars to ABC Equipment Company for office supplies. And for one hundred twenty four dollars eighty cents to Gate House Media for legal app from two thirty nine to the road.
And your second? Maybe second?
I should.
I'm sorry. I'll give her.
Hi.
Hi.
Make it all happy enough.
Okay, who is? We is on the point.
Um. A bunch of CPC lost Monday night, just fairly quick. Um, they want to reconstruct van stand down prior. And so they're in the process of trying to get that out. And then the chair of the housing authority came in with a proposal to um replace seventy eight windows at Wheeler Park, number two, portion in back, seventy eight windows. For just over five hundred thousand dollars, which figured out if you add it or you think that divided about sixty eight hundred dollars. And then what I found interesting, we're talking to a tenant who's in the first section, they have windows and roof will be placed within the last five years. And I don't know where that money came from, it didn't come from CPC. They're looking for over half million dollars from CPC, so we sent the people back to do a little bit more research. And then there's the issue with the ball field and where they're gonna put that. And so far, it seems that it's going to go on central field. But they also know that they need to come through the planning board for parking and for shore. And that's.
Can I ask, Wheeler Park is not owned by us, is it?
It's a housing authority. But the property wants to channel.
Okay.
I, I could ask question on that, do you know if the the bids have to be prevailing wage?
Yes.
It doesn't.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Um, I went to the zoning board last week for Old Open Bucket, um, for public hearing. A two and a half hours, you're moving right along, um, the setback is not due uh, Thomas Situate. So we buy us and we gotta learn on that. There will be three or four houses right on Old Open Bucket that's gonna swing in, um. Name is emotionally concerned obviously about the traffic. And you have, um, that that's right before barrel work, which is where the entrance is there. Uh, we looked into a traffic report and it's interesting how people, if you don't wait here, we we think you hide by yet somewhere. So interesting, like you might go, yeah, I'm gonna go down to the road, yeah, I'm gonna go up, of course, that's true, but that's kind of like where we live. Um, so everything's going to the road, I guess, so I don't know what's gonna happen, so yeah. Um, and then the other thing was sidewalks, they were concerned by sidewalks, it showed late to the bus. On both sides of the road, uh, with covered thing for them. Um, then I listened to the listening for the water treatment plants. There was nothing new, um. The participants were kind of unhappy that there was nothing new. Mr. Vignani was the only person that I could identify until that was there for me for select. Um, but really interesting, the first question they asked was where do you live? Do you live on Stern Road or Fort Stratus or other, and almost everybody knows someplace else, other. So that's kind of, nobody really wants to know what he's talking, but uh, they didn't offer anything new. Um, and that frustrated, they even have set claims. So, um, I don't really know that move yet. But that's all we have to say, it, uh, Old Open Bucket is continued until uh, seven weeks up. That's the end, that's it. Yeah, she told me on this twenty, twenty third, yeah, Tuesday night. One third or something. Yeah, um, they want the engineers to talk to each other, get together and, um. They don't feel that the engineers have to be present about public meeting at that stage of time. I would suggest that we wait till after we get the peer review. Um, and then the planning board can choose if they want to maybe comment. You're very good way of how you feel about water. It it it.
How I feel.
Of how everybody feels, like nobody knows where it's coming from, they don't, the planning board is deeply vested in the water, um. Mr. Pukiri has to explain to every single person that comes what for we is. And how come it gets to do what it gets to do. Um, they did ask us last night, as part of the planning board, if it came before us, what would we look for? When we talked about writing, well, flow of water and you know, make sure it's accessible and you know, make sure the streets were wide and everything that's only was covered. So it was a pretty weird overall, um. It was, my theory is there's a lot of need is that part of the less days, um. And I don't travel Old Open Bucket pretty much at most, like no idea what we see is.
I used to, I used to live on Old Open Bucket and I avoided at all costs.
Yeah.
I don't find it to be very very fast.
Do you question me?
Very fast, very fast, very fast.
Yeah, no. Huge amount of traffic on it, I'm sick of the races.
But, yeah, that's, yeah. And no, I think there is a lot of traffic on it.
Yeah.
There there are.
And they go very, very fast.
Commuter traffic, that's quick, that's.
Yes.
One, late afternoon.
Right, it's it's quick.
They are fast, definitely.
At the four way stop, um, stop sign, it may well help slow things down a little bit. But and then, but when you come down Old Open Bucket Road, now you put a stop sign and you still have that site distance to get out to take the road, and that can be very difficult.
Yeah, very tough, you've walked out there.
Right, that's mean very, very hard. So, um. As a resident, I avoid that at all costs. Even though I used to do it.
Anybody else come over there, so I'm a help.
Well, I didn't pay, I understand you you attended water resource committee and you're my staff, so I don't know if you're out of the past.
Yeah. Oh, I did. Yeah, I I did, yeah, that's, yeah. That was really interesting and I I encouraged them to to come and 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 talk to us and I hope that somebody was here, um. You're very concerned obviously about the water treatment plants. Uh, they did, they did produce a best management practice document, they're gonna put on their website. Uh, that has fines associated with it, they've got all kinds of cross, which they they're trying to um, to to beef up. They, um, they're concerned about central field and how they're gonna water it. They have concerns whether there is a irrigation system there in dysfunction, because I saw it working the other day. And we don't stand on allowing irrigations, that's where the trouble. Um, total I I was street for the moon, uh, and they can come and talk to us.
And that's between that, you're very.
Actually, you can.
They have one here already.
You you can't put one in now.
But it's existing.
But it's existing and if you have an irrigation system, you can operate it once a week.
I think a little bit of precinct.
Yeah. In terms of the precincts.
That's not a, that's part of the town regulation.
And then another word on a big giant field, so I think that they they're probably gonna come ask for waiver and the water resources were very concerned about that.
Well, I don't think, so for public fields, I don't think you need a waiver for the irrigation system, I think it's.
They wouldn't put one in up at, um, up here cushion and and the field died.
Okay, I thought that they that you were allowed to on public lands that like recreation areas and fields that the town could put in systems that they want, you can't put them in in private houses.
Intention. No, not more.
I didn't even know it had an irrigation system, it was hot as a rock up there, I don't even know if you were up there, but um, I never just, and I I encouraged them to to come and talk to us, when he's, I said, come for the field and come for the water treatment plant, please, please come and, you know. At least there's a platform here, this group is kind of sequestered here at quarter of the library, nobody even knows the idea, they're doing really important work and they're an advisory board, but they they need to be listened to. And actually, it was something from the um, water resources that um, caught a mistake in zoning the other night. About uh, coverage issue on Curtis Street, interested, so, um. But coverage was too big, was long. Only fifteen percent, no, up to twenty eight percent, so they didn't find that. Interesting group of people, really excited, I think they feel a little left out in the dark. In the.
Oh, well, if you shut them in a closet, they would be.
Yeah. So, alright, yeah, yeah, alrighty.
Can I make one comment before you go on just for your, because you're following the forty B project?
Yeah.
Pretty much have laid eyes on it or whatever. Um, if they're doing the traffic study on Old Open Bucket Road, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, there is a subdivision in Norwalk that's been approved, but it's not constructed yet. So you might wanna have a traffic consultant look at that together with the forty B.
Okay.
Cause it is on, it is access on Old Open Bucket Road, so that'll help, that'll help the town.
Is that, ring every road. Right.
It is, it's further down, just one entrance is gonna be off of Old Open Bucket where where old Sean Harris's house was.
Oh. There's Sean Harris's house there.
Can I just for a moment?
Well, it's interesting you should say that, see, because
Oh, Sean's brother, yeah, Chuckie.
Because it was, um, a lot of people were commenting about all the traffic at the road ring. And Mr. Jeff Getz, pretty much said we take one project at a time, and he's still like pile it all together, pile it.
Well, just make sure they're aware of it anyway, because there is gonna be some more traffic potentially coming from a little bit further down the road. They should just.
Which one?
Alright, so, um, there's gonna be a roadway safety audit this Tuesday. It's going from Henry Turner Bailey Road down to First Parish, so before Henry Turner Bailey, Blue Hill, Manlot and First Parish, so, um. Several members of the town hall staff will be attending that, it's all arranged by the SDOT. Um, so that, um, you know, it's because of the high accident rate in that area, so, you know. Stay tuned on that. Um, I received a letter the other day from the US Department of Justice, um, Rhode Island District Office, so we're not a hundred percent sure of its applicability, but it relates to Americans with Disabilities Act for outdoor dining and it's saying they have to comply um, with all outdoor dining, um, all has to be fully ADA accessible. And so I provided, I gave a copy of the letter to Bob Vogel and to Jim Drow. And I believe it's gonna be sent out to all, um, restaurants who have outdoor seating. Um, because we have had some issues with the sidewalk getting way too narrow on some of them. Um, we had a three hour walk today at Seaside and Situate. Um, I think it was a productive meeting. I think they get the fact that we think the site's a mess. And that, again, it's all about occupancy permits, um, because all the building permits have been issued. And, um, I, I think we're gonna see some improvement in the next two months, um. But we always think that and that it doesn't really happen, but, um.
Take this football trash.
I I think, I think that they might be really, they might really do it this time, because I told them that it's been public perception that site's a mess. And, um, I think that they might wanna come to the spa and ask for a sure reaction. So I told him at no way, shape or form, we entertain that now. Um, but maybe in a couple of months after they do more work, um. Then maybe the board might consider it, um. That's not a promise, I mean, but I mean, they understand that the basins are still gonna be the last thing and you know, the agreed upon procedure needs to be done. So we we talked about that, um, the basins and the top coat of the road will be the last two things done and the the top coat may not get on this year at all. And the the top coat may not get on this year at all. I mean, they're figuring housing, housing construction into the second week in December. So it may be wise for them to wait to next year, but they may decide that they want to do certain, certain of the cul-de-sacs for the top coat paving. I reminded them that they have to fix happily, um, they have to end red portion that they ruined last year after they paved it. Uh, we talked about blockage of the roads, we we talked, it it was a productive meeting.
And plantings, trees.
Plantings, we talked about that, they have a whole priority list of plantings and then the remainder of the trees that, um. We had the fifty trees and we agreed upon some of them as sidewalk last year. We agreed not to locate, that'll be a sidewalk this fall to locate the remainder of those, but all those fifty trees will be used. Um, yes, they are starting to do some replacement plantings and um, they understand that landscaping is a huge issue. So I think it was a productive meeting, like our our consulting engineer was there and I mean, it was conservation was there. So I think that, I think we made our points.
And what about the uh, because they have an onsite well and that posts keep breaking.
They have four wells.
Four wells, but weren't they, weren't some of them breaking and then flooding?
Yeah, some of, I mean, they have, they have frequent breakage of irrigation lines out there and um, they have to regress that. I mean, that several residents have been caught watering and we told them they're not supposed to be wa- watering with the the town at Situate tap water, it's one today. So I I think that it it was, it was a good meeting. Um, and I'm gonna hope that things ramp up quickly for for the site work. Residents are complaining as well as the town, so I mean, the amount of residents complaints are significant. I've I've met with um, the two resident homeowners association people, they've come in to express their concerns and.
What are their concerns?
Like a lot of it's landscaping, they want to know that Toa's not gonna walk away. And I let them know that we have a bond, they're not gonna, you know, Toa, Toa's committed verbally that they are going to finish this development. And you know, and the town's, town's in the planning order not to release the bond until it's ready to be released. That's, that's the part of life that I keep telling them.
Which is the correct part of them.
So I mean, my thoughts are from an observation point of view, it was a very respectful meeting to the town this time, which has not always been the case. This time, I I I. Karen and Amy were listening to very well, lots of dogs came there, and there's a little change of part on the part, I can see that.
I mean, so they're gonna be submitting a plan in the next few days, some of the erosion control that's not in the hundred foot buffer, we're gonna allow to be removed. Because that's a big source of, uh, the residents don't want the erosion control. But you know, it has to be there and Toa Brothers has told them it has to be there, but some of the stuff that's already in stabilized areas outside the buffer zone. We we're gonna allow to be removed after we say the plan, Amy and I will sit down and um, go over it. The big pump at the end at on Hadley Road is probably gonna be removed at the end of August, early September. Occasionally that is still being used to for pumping. And that whole area is a source of visual concern, but yet it has to be there. Um, to make for the pumping and um, it's all gonna, it'll just be a simple swell, let's tell them. But.
Let that breathe, they want to have the water go away.
The silt swap right at the edge of Hadley Road is gonna go away because that's not doing any, that's not doing anything at this point. But we reminded them that they still have to submit their NFTs reports because there's over nature of disturbance out there. I haven't, I told them I haven't seen a SWIP, a SWIP report from them since about March and you know. Um, they've been doing them, they tell me, but they're supposed to be submitted.
Then they should have backlog of.
Well, he's, he'll send me the whole backlog, he didn't like. So, you know, I think I have to believe it's gonna, it's gonna get better.
With the basins, were some of them constructed as temporary basins or they were all constructed constructed to.
We have one total temporary basin still out there and that's still, that's still being used, that probably has, I don't know, two feet of silt in it.
But it, but it was never finished, so that was by design.
No, it was never, never, that was by design, we always had a temporary base, the basin is temporary. And yes, they'll have to, they, they'll all have to be cleaned up.
But all, but all the other ones that might have to be cleaned up, that is there a condition I can only use like a skin steer?
That's right.
That'll be fun.
And they understand that condition and um, they understand that they have to do testing as well.
Right.
So I I, they 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 get that.
Yeah.
They get that.
That's a nice capable walk up here, we forgot they were just putting water in corner.
Right.
And raining.
And raining.
So that's, I mean, we we remain very busy with multiple, you know, with all different types of projects coming in, so. That's all I have.
Yeah. By law, it's seven thirty. For public media for site player new schedule review for probably driveway at nine three, Alpha Street plus five and six.
What are you? Good, good evening. Records where you were more registered, which you're more century. What means the property owner and the applicant, uh, Bob and Christina Koonahan. The property is located on Elm Street, ninety three Elm Street. Uh, this was previously an A and R plan of the board endorsed about two months ago at this point. We're here specifically for lots five and six, lots one and two Koonahans. Um, Koonahans are residents of town, they have children in school, they're looking at constructing their new home on lot six, property that you see tonight. We're here specifically for a common driveway approval in accordance with section seven twenty of the bylaw. The common driveway, I shaded in gray on the plan. Uh, you see that the common driveway starts on Elm Street, which is to the right side of the page, traverses to the back house, which is the lot six house. You can see that it cuts off to the right to the lot five, house proposed out front. Uh, the common driveway complies with all of the requirements of section seven twenty in that it provides access only to the two houses. Uh, it reduces access points onto Elm Street, it reduces the stormwater impacts by having one driveway instead of two driveways at this location. We feel that it preserves the rural character of Situate and reduces the impact to the two properties. Your bylaw seven twenty point seven has several standards, eight throughout. We've gone through those on the plan, uh, we feel that we meet all of those standards in particular. Uh, the cross section materials, we have a very specific cross section with respect to the depth of the gravel and pavement finishes, we comply with that. We comply with the width of the common driveway, which is proposed as sixteen feet wide, which is the allowed width for two lots. We've provided a twenty foot by thirty foot emergency fire access turnaround, you have an email correspondence from the deputy fire chief. Confirming the location of that. We've provided the proper site distance in accordance with cash flow requirements at the driveway intersection with Elm Street. Elm Street has a twenty five miles per hour speed limit at this location, uh, we comply in both directions. And the length of the common driveway itself, you're allowed a maximum of up to a thousand feet of length. This common driveway uh consists of a hundred and eighteen feet for the common portion of the driveway. The driveway itself is located within an easement as required and general note number thirteen on the first page of the plan set. Includes the language in the bylaw that the common driveway will never be considered as a town accepted way. And that there be a restrictive covenant placed on the deeds for both of the properties, uh, indicating such. This property was put out for peer review, uh, submitted with the common driveway application. We also given, submitted a stormwater permit application, this administrative stormwater permit. As the project disturbs less than forty thousand square feet of land. You had retained Horstley and Whitman Group to perform the peer review. Their latest correspondence, I believe, says that all comments have been satisfactory addressed normally with respect to the stormwater portion. But they do comment on the water resource protection district requirements, which a portion of this property is within. They also comment on the full common driveway bylaw requirements indicating compliance with all of the standards of seven twenty. You have an email from the fire chief. Uh, section seven twenty point four of the bylaw is a little ambiguous in the fact that it's labeled additional information. It says the planning board may require additional if additional information if they consider it necessary to review the adequacy of the common driveway application. To this point, we've had the application for about a month. There's been no request made from the planning department for additional information on this. We'd ask if board members have any additional information that we might need, but otherwise we feel that we comply. Uh, and we look forward to moving this project along. Good.
Karen. Um, so yes, we engaged Horstley and Vinton for this period view, they've done two period views. It was a decent middle yesterday that we've not had, we've not seen, we've not deployed that. That I, I'll fall into Horstley and Vinton's sector and we will let you know. Um, a couple of things I want the board to really to comment on on this common driveway. Um, is the limit of the common driveway. Is the board satisfied where where they're showing the end of the common driveway easement? Uh, I think that's, that's important for the board to co- for the board to comment on. I think that, um, I think that would, I think, I think we need to know how much fill is going in here. And there seems in some areas like there's a lot of fill going in here. I wanted the board to notice that the electric utility is, um, not all of it's underground. Make sure that the board fully understands where the electric utility is. And if you're gonna require part of this to be moved underground, then that's something that you need to let the applicant know. Um, all the utilities, um, we need to show, we need, have, need to have the connections of where they actually show. What what the existing lines are in Elm Street, so that we not have hanging utility lines like we have a couple right now. I think for the most part, it, I mean, the store lot permit is administrative review. Um, right now there's thirty six thou- approximately thirty six thousand square feet of disturbance. Um, but they're, so they're only here for the common driveway to- tonight. I do not have a decision ready for the common driveway. Um, I, we will need the extension for the common driveway and for the administrative review for the store lot permit. I think that we'll look at, um, those issues.
So is the thirty six thousand, is that related to this property limit of the common drive?
No, it's limited to both, it's to, it's for both, for both lot five and lot six, it's the whole, it's the whole disturbance for both of them.
It's the whole, right.
It's the whole, right.
Yes. Yeah. Um, I understand with this common driveway that up at lot six. That basically the garage is that's sort of a turnaround, so sort of someone can back in and go out. But then you have the um, emergency turnaround, which is basically behind two car, two cars, I was reading that.
That's correct, it's behind the two cars, there's no parking in the emergency turnaround.
So the person who buys that house will have to be informed that they only have room outside for two cars.
And you know what, that can create a horror show. An absolute horror show. If people are not cognizant of what this is, it can turn into a real mess. I mean, I I have to tell you that I I really have a problem with this type of turnaround. That I don't know, it should be. Moved, oh, it's. It's too squished, it's too contained. Maybe it's legitimate, but it's just not. I don't care for it at all, I I don't think it's in anyone's best interest with this particular situation. Maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but um, having the turnaround behind a couple of cars just doesn't do it for me.
Yeah, I have a temperature and it it feels like this would end up being. You know, parking, it feels, it's just, it feels too uh contiguous with the actual parking spaces here, uh, for the first house.
Right, and very confusing.
I'm I'm actually surprised the fire department isn't okay with it. It seemed like it wanted to happen, so that it didn't, it didn't end up being that the topic wanted to use it as.
Well, it's labeled as the emergency turn, but it doesn't look like it. It just looks like an extension of the driveway. That's what I'm I'm seeing.
Well, integrated into the driveway.
I know, but it still looks like part of the driveway. Is there anything that you can do to change that?
And certainly look at, I mean, we try to incorporate it into the driveway to minimize the visual impacts and try to decrease the amount of impervious surface. When emergency vehicles trying to make a turn, it's looking for the easiest location to do so. That driveway there is twenty feet wide, it's in excess of sixty feet long. So there's plenty of room there for cars to park in front of the emergency turnaround up next to the house. We thought the fire chief would be okay with it, he sent your correspondence that it was, if he wants to move it, do not go with the P. It's already assigned off on it, we'll move it, that's an easy change. But it adds more impervious surface to the site, disturbs more area to do so.
I mean, on that topic, I think that if, you know, if the turnaround meets the technical requirements for emergency apparatus, then they're okay with it. I don't, I think from a uh, smart, you know, smart development, kind of low impact development standpoint, I can kind of agree with Greg that. Minimizing disturbances is probably better as long as, you know, we're meeting the stormwater rules and all of that. I don't know if I'm gonna comment more for talking more about this issue, I mean. Um, one thing I noted on the plan is that there's a, there's one tree that's called out, it's an existing tree to be removed. Um, is that particularly, is that tree anything in particular why that's called out and it's nowhere else on the plan, or is that the only tree to be removed?
Just specifically that one there because it was within the limits of the common driveway. So we have, we have a tree line around the remaining of the site and we've identified all of the twelve inch trees, you know, from stormwater aspect of there. But there are two trees within the common driveway that have to be removed.
There's two.
I believe there were two within the common driveway location.
Greater than twelve inch, right?
Greater than twelve inch, yeah, one right at the front there. There's, there's another one right at about station zero plus seventy five. There's, there's two of them actually right there, so there's three that have been removed with the uh, common driveway. They're all inside the driveway, they're on lot five or lot six property.
But they're not within the driveway, that's just for, they're just.
It's just because of, because of.
Trap raised capacity.
Utilities, yes, no, they're within the driveway easement.
Oh, I'm sorry, so this only shows one tree, you said it's three.
There's, there's two more located at the uh, at station zero plus seventy five, just on the left side of the driveway.
Is there a reason you didn't identify those?
No, there isn't. You have the word technical to that, that known on the first, right? Any tree that's shown on the back, we remove. Any tree that's shown on that, we remove.
You also, yes, yeah?
My concern here is, and I have the same issue with forty-two office tree. I mean, fire department is coming down here too. And I know they'll back up anywhere and I know the fire department has a sidewalk on it. But I still think that it's an awfully long schlep to turn around and go up again. I don't care if it's sixty feet long. It's just.
I can tell you where I live. They back up all the time. It's still quite similar.
I under- I understand.
And I, I'm, I'm certainly not going to override the fire chief.
It's not the fire chief. It's definitely.
Well, the man who starts off, that's his job. And like Ben says, we gotta try and to services. I understand what you're saying. It looks switched in some kind of, we need something a little more, you mentioned, to, to get.
I don't have any comments.
Um. At the end of the day, I think you're probably right that the fire chief is the one who who should make this decision at least. He knows you're doing it in terms of
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think that, I think it's quite likely that 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 would become parking space. But that's hopefully that's a risk that they understand. I would prefer not to create more impervious surface. Why is the proper line for the common driveway cut short like that? Was it in the design?
Sure. So the, we consider the driveway common to the points essentially where the, the two driveways split. Lot five, you know, only has access up to that point. We carry it, I believe, thirty feet beyond the emergency fire truck turnaround. So that way, you know, they have full rights to use that area when they're making a maneuver if they were, you know, required to on lot five. But beyond that line really isn't common driveway. That's private driveway of lot six. Lot six will be responsible for that.
So how does, how does the, how does the stormwater management system for the common driveway tie into the rest of all of this construction?
Sure. So, so in the stormwater standards or the stormwater reports that we submitted, lot five is responsible for the stormwater VMPs on lot five itself. Lot six is responsible for the stormwater VMPs on lot six.
So you have the common driveway, um, total maintenance of that on lot six?
That's correct. All of the stormwater maintenance on lot six is responsible to lot six.
But the design is contiguous.
Yes, it is.
Right. Between the two lots, there's, it's not like we're going to end up with disparate stormwater designs between lot six and lot five.
No, they're not.
It's contiguous.
One is not reliant on the other.
And then the, the common driveway agreement has both parties responsible for making the stormwater system in the common driveway.
Don't believe that's in the common driveway yet. Typically, we condition, we don't need a final one until after
That's the expectation.
Two years.
So we have still a lot of stuff to look at. It was just sent to the parent event there this afternoon, so we have to make a natural plan. So you want to see it?
Sure. I understand that. It really wasn't a revised set of plans. It was a, a discharge compliance statement that the Coon hands aren't going to have a list of discharge on the site. And it was a detail on a pertaining one associated with the setting system essentially. There was no changes to the stormwater system, no change to the common driveway. But if you want to review, you should look at it. I understand that.
We do, if we know, and we do get to protect both you and us, so
Yeah, understood.
We don't have any kind of that. So, Karen, what would you like to do?
And you're, you're going to give us the cut and fill availability as well?
I certainly could have run that. It's not a requirement anywhere that we provide that. It's no cut and fill required plan. There's no limitations if I tell you it's five thousand square feet or a hundred thousand square feet. What I can tell you is that we try to minimize the fill on the site. We've designed it to comply with the standards situated, which are in the Water Resource District. We have to have extra groundwater separation. We have to have four to one slopes. That all increases the amount of fill on the site. It is a filled site. I can figure out the exact number. It really isn't a relevant number with respect to any of your standards. But I can provide
It looked like almost nine feet of fill, but the house is going up lot six. I mean, that's what it looks like. The common driveway looked like maybe two feet of fill on, on the common driveway. I just want everyone to understand that. It's what we apply this day.
On, on that topic, could you, I'm not super familiar with where this common driveway is going to be mostly located. Could you describe, I guess, the existing condition a little bit in that space right now?
Sure. The, the house at, at this property is terrible. It's falling down. It's, whether it's physically condemned, I don't know. It's in real tough shape. The property at one point was a, was an old farm. It's well overgrown. There are a couple of smaller sheds and fences located out back. The driveway that's there is either gravel or a very poorly shaped, well, asphalt mix. It's all overgrown vegetation out front. It's not virgin woods out front by any means.
And what, I guess, what do you anticipate might? So I see, you know, we have this way on one side. We have a limited clearing. So between lot five and the I guess, the west side of the common driveway paving, what, what would maybe go in that space? It's not supposed to be a turf grass area. I don't know.
That's fine.
Want to comment about the electric utility? I just want to make sure everyone sees that because I mean, we need information. Now's the time for the board to ask because the underground issue
It's our intent that they be underground. If there's anything that indicates otherwise, I will correct it on the plan. I believe we labeled it as subsurface. It's obviously overhead out on the street what we're connecting to, but our intent is underground electric.
So all the way into the, on the way up to the site.
Yes.
Where do you pick up the electric?
Uh, off the front house. We're running straight out to the street off the back house. I think we're coming off of Elm Street off the utility pole there. I would double check it.
Yeah? Also, I'm here with a lot. I mean, we have a question. We're getting a little bit of a question. It's like, what's the best thing to make for the site?
That's right. That's, and I don't agree with that at the time. That's my opinion.
Are there any comments? Is there a public, yes?
Yes, Steve, you are. Come just to the record. And, and I, I understand what you're saying on the turnaround. But we've done a number of these and now obviously over the years. I think most of you guys are probably here when we did the map on second clip between Ridge Ave and the Crescent. And we actually did the same thing as this. It's been up half for a number of years and there hasn't been a problem. And we purposely extended the drive into the house to make sure that they wouldn't park in that area. But it, it's my understanding that what the deputy chief really wants is to be able to turn the ambulance around in that turnaround. Fire chief himself basically says our trucks come in reverse. And if there's a fire out there, they're going to back the truck out. They're going to back the truck in whatever they have to do. They don't want the trucks to be too close to the fire, so they do stay away a little bit. But it's more really for the ambulance runs up to the house. So if somebody's in the house, there's a couple of cars there, I think as long as it's long enough like that, they should be fine.
I'm just laughing because he's the fire chief.
Excuse me?
He's the fire chief, my husband. So you keep saying fire chief, but I'm
Our, our fire chief has that.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I have seen, I mean, we've seen it a number of times and it has, I haven't seen a problem with it yet myself or heard of any of the ones that we've done that are done this way.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
However, however, I would like the turnaround to be further up so that if the ambulance has to go up to lot six, they can turn around easily without that being up. That is my concern. That is my concern. I don't, you know, here it's a who cares because they pull into the driveway frame. But not up here.
So would you take it on the line to make a
I would absolutely take it.
Do you see any public comment?
So if there's anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment now, it would be your time. You can raise your hand on the bottom of your screen or you can turn your hand on and wait to us and I'm happy to unmute you so that you can speak on the office chat. The office here is here for half more time.
Well done.
Would you want to? What do we need to hear?
I'm recommending a continuance until July twenty-eighth at seven o'clock because we, we need, we need time to get this all resolved. I think, I think it can be all resolved in the next month. And I think that I need, I would like July twenty-eighth and time to file the clerk for August twelfth for both for the common driveway. And then I want, I want to stormwater continue to the same time because they, they run, they run in conjunction.
All right, are you ready? I'm going to continue the public meeting for the site plan administrative review, common driveway, Atlanta, Elm Street, lot five and six to July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. And to continue the time of action, filing the term of birth until August twelfth, twenty twenty-two. I'm going for a continuance of the administrative action stormwater permit to August twelfth, twenty twenty-two. I respond with the common driveway site plan review.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you. unanimous. Where do you define chief? Boston?
In Austin.
In Boston?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, you're busy.
Yeah.
Do you want to take an eight-minute break?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to take a break.
Motion to take a break.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll be taking a break for just eight minutes. We'll be back.
Some drop call or, or go to the restroom?
Uh, I need some videos.
Videos.
Thank you.
Remember you have to call forward that side. All right.
I have seven fifty-nine.
Okay, so on this way. When did you call it back to order?
I think I made a call.
So can we call this meeting back to order at 8:00 P.M. June 23rd, 2022, the City of Plating Board? Eight o'clock, the public hearing, the public meeting, stormwater site plan administrative review of common driveway. 803 First Parish Road and Laurelwood Drive, lot three.
You can read this list.
Okay.
An important issue for the town's city of stormwater regulations approved 42910 and the city of general by law section 3205 of stormwater. The planning board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022 at 8:00 P.M. In the Sullivan's Hearing Room at City of Town Hall. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant J.C. Luther-Johnson and owners John T. Murray, 803 First Parish Road and Simeon Properties LLC, Lot 3 Laurelwood Drive. For stormwater permit common driveway, the property located in 803 First Parish Road and Lot 3 Laurelwood Drive. Assessors now, block lot twenty-nine dash one dash two and thirty dash one dash five K. Approximately forty thousand three hundred twenty square feet of uplet is proposed to be altered. A public hearing for stormwater permit is required for over forty thousand square feet of land. If over forty thousand square feet of land is proposed for disturbance. A public meeting will also simultaneously be held for a site plan administrative review for common driveway of approximately forty-eight linear feet. Plans are available for review in the planning board office, town hall, city of during normal business hours. Butters and other interested parties are invited to attend this public hearing. Thank you very much.
Would you be grateful?
For record Gregory Morris registered engineer Morris Engineering. With me is the applicant Stephen Bjorkland. As was just written to the record, this is again a request for a common driveway in accordance with section 720 of the bylaw. It's also a request for a stormwater permit associated with the construction of that driveway and a new single-family home. I have lot three Laurelwood Drive. Familiarizing you with the plan, First Parish Road is at the top of the page. On the right-hand side of the page would be the Laurelwood Drive subdivision. Lot three derives its frontage off of the Laurelwood Drive subdivision here. This portion being lot three. 803 First Parish Road being up here with an existing home on it. The proposal is to construct the new common driveway off of First Parish Road. You'll see that there is a wetland on the frontage of the Laurelwood Drive lot. By constructing the common driveway, it eliminates disturbance of that area, eliminates wetland resource area. Furthermore, reduces curb cuts from two curb cuts to one curb cut at this location. The place laid out again in accordance with section 720.7 standards, we've withheld your specific cross-section gravel depths, the pavement width of sixteen feet in the common driveway area. Providing a fire truck turnaround with twenty feet wide by thirty feet. You do have correspondence from the deputy fire chief approving the location of that turnaround at this location. This turnaround is located further back on the 803 First Parish Road property. You can see it kind of along the back property line, there's a stone wall. We could hide it in there. It would be in the second place for both lots. This driveway location was picked primarily because it's largely just lawn surface area right now. There are about six trees that have to come down within the common driveway portion of this property. I believe Mr. Bjorkland has some pictures of the trees that are, that are out there, but it's largely lawn area. Where the new house is being constructed out back, that does appear to be virgin forest, pine forest for the most part. The total land disturbance is forty thousand three hundred and twenty square feet of area. For the stormwater aspect of the site, what we've done is we've proposed roof chambers to connect to the gutters, the downspout system on the house for remote groundwater infiltration. We've proposed a brass rain garden adjacent to the common driveway, which is adjacent to a piece of diaphragm for treatment off the driveway prior to the rain garden to achieve ninety percent TSS removal. The stormwater report documents that we comply with rates and volumes of runoff for the two to the ten, twenty-five and hundred-year storm events. This project was put out for peer review with the engineering company or the engineering corporation. I believe we satisfied all of their comments in their latest peer review letter. There was a revised plan submitted yesterday. I don't believe that they reviewed that. But the change on the plan based off of yesterday was adding a utility location in First Parish Road, which was the water main in a location of a proposed hydrant at the location. Fire chief had indicated he wanted a hydrant placed there. It would have no impact on the stormwater design of the common driveway design. Steve, are you?
Yeah. So we did submit this for engineering peer review and we do have, we do have comments from the peer review engineers were sent to you. They are, they did get the latest revised middle today. We'll wait to see what they comment on that. We did get a peer review in this afternoon for, for the plan. We are pretty much in agreement with everybody with what's on the plans. They do, they do point out that the common driveway bylaw, you know, this, this is, I counted about twelve trees to come down for the common driveway and the breaking associated with it. They, the peer reviewer thought that impact should be minimized and they refer, they defer to the planning board regarding mitigation for true removal. You know, drainage, they pretty much agree with the drainage design and, you know, they just have to go back and look at their revised, the revised information that has been submitted.
You said it came today.
Yeah.
We have it.
How long is the driveway? Because the public notice says forty-three.
It's, it's longer than that.
It's the review.
It's, it's three hundred and nine feet from the storm station zero plus zero zero, which is centralized in the road to the end of the common driveway east. So we're having some issues with the common, with the applications not agreeing with the plan. But it's, it's, it's three hundred and nine feet as they say and all that will be straightened out in the, in the next month.
Okay.
And that'll all be reflected in the, in the decision. You know, which will come down, but that's, they've been working on the easement et cetera.
I'll make a quick comment. Would I mention my question here? So the peer review you said we got today, we haven't seen it.
I don't remember if I sent it out though.
Yeah.
I probably didn't send it out at three, when it came at three o'clock today. I probably didn't send it out. So I will send that to the board.
So just so we're clear, everybody knows that we would like stuff removed early, right? So we, we have to see it. So it isn't, yeah, like we don't want to see what you have to say. But we also have a process that we need to follow. You know, like I always say, there's one town planner and it's eighteen of you guys and she gets all of your work. So, you know, she does, so we do the very best we can, but we need to follow the process. And we don't follow the process that's, so guys, we have to have continuously. Tell me you're not going to quick cut this, Mr. Bjorkland.
Tell us what?
We're not going to quick cut this, are we?
The, the area where the common driveway is, like I said, it's mostly lawn. I've got some pictures of it, which I'll forward up to the board and use. There's a big huge lawn out there next to the house, but in order to catch all the stormwater, the we can catch, we've got to put the swale over on the east side of the property because it all slopes in that direction. Originally, we were trying to put the swale on the upside of the driveway. It just didn't work, so we had to put it on the other side, which actually moves the common driveway further away from the butter on the east, which I guess is somewhat of a benefit to them. And it makes it so that we can trap all of the stormwater that's coming from the existing lawn and the driveway that's there. And it's actually all being routed back towards where the proposed house is going to go before its outlet. So that's all closed in and contains a hundred-year storm event. So I just wanted to say that in, in the, in the original application, we had a turnaround just like the one you saw in the last common driveway. And we were kind of asked indirectly to change that. So we moved, we moved that down to the back of the property. So the length of the common driveway goes as far as where the turnaround is.
Right.
And then the consultant's review asked us to include in the common driveway easement. They wanted us to extend that even further so that the outlet portion of all the stormwater stuff is still located in that. So the easement actually goes all the way back onto lot three, which is the Laurelwood lot. So Steve, like we said, the letter just came in at three o'clock today. We, we looked at the letter. We made changes on the original.
No, I just wanted to know whether I have.
Yeah.
So does it have? I haven't looked at any of it, so how's that?
I just want, I just wanted to comment, we had an initial letter from them, it was a few pages long. We made those changes. We got that letter June seventeenth. So we made the plan changes on this and got comments from DPW, which we addressed on, upon the plan, which had to do with timing, the service is up in front, there is no gas out there. It will be underground electric and there's a six-inch water pipe out there. Originally, the fire, the deputy fire chief had said that we didn't have to add an extra hydrant. We've gone over it kind of extensively. And then there was a meeting that involved, I believe, the fire chief as well as the deputy fire chief. And between them, they took a ride out and decided that they wanted to have us add a hydrant on the line that's out in First Parish Road. So the location, and you'll, there's a note on the newest plan that shows where we'd like to put the hydrant, but the note says that it's to be positioned as per the fire department. So if they want us to move it up or down the street a little bit, we're glad to do that either way. So the letter that came in today, basically, they've agreed with the changes that we've made and all the comments that we have. They were, they were fine with the plan. We know we have to do an extension of the timeframe for this. That's not a problem at all. But I think as far as our content is concerned, I think they're happy that we've everything included. I'm assuming that probably, and I hate to have my back to people, but I'm assuming there's neighbors that are in here that either have concerns or they just want to know exactly what's going on. So hopefully we can address those. This is the board will give us the chance.
Hi, I asked Mr. Bjorkland to provide some pictures of, of the true removal because one of the things that's on the plan that board should make a decision on is whether you want a fence on the, on the side where the stone wall is, I guess, toward, towards the east. And so I asked him to take pictures to show you the condition of the trees and to show you that so that he can make an informed decision about whether you think a fence is required to buffer adjacent properties.
And I would just state for the record that, I mean, there's, there's one neighbor that potentially has an impact and I don't know if they're in the, in the room or not maybe, okay. We don't have a problem putting a fence up there. My guess is going to be that you're probably not going to want a fence there because it's really the only fence out there. It's just going to be one straight long fence. If we have to do some green, we're glad to do that. I'd rather see some green stuff out there and maybe plant, you know, some evergreens or something like that. It's, we do have a distance between where this common drive is going to be because it's not up against that wall. It's further away. And I know you haven't seen the plane close by. Oh, when this is done, we can go hallway and you can get a really good look at it. But because of the drainage, we've moved it further away and I think that's going to be more pleasing for them. They are definitely downhill from us and our whole design was driven to make sure that our water is not going to go towards their site. I'm guessing that we're probably about six to eight feet higher where this driveway is going to go. Then it just slopes right down towards their home, but the home is, is a distance away. And I kind of have these in order, so I don't know which, who wants to flip through it. But you, we've got from the entrance, if you keep them in order and flip them through, I basically walk in the driveway to the turnaround and then turn around and walk back out again. So that's the first. And I'll give you a little bit of time to, to take a look at that. I'll try to keep talking.
Can I ask a question? Where's the turnaround going to be on that picture? Can you show us that?
Right there.
Excuse me, can you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry, it's downing.
Yeah.
I bet you love the First Parish Road.
Thank you.
I'm the second house up.
Yeah, so you're, you're in this location right here. I'll pick this up. Do you mind if I turn this towards them? Okay, because this, you can come up front if you want. Do you want to step up near the front? So the driveway comes in, this is your house over in here. So the turnaround is right here.
Okay.
So we're coming straight in lawn here with the driveway. All these lines you see right here, this is basically, it's a, it's a shallow swale that we have to put in to catch all the water. This water is all being directed to infiltrate through here. And in a hundred-year storm event, it's going to actually outlet out behind your property on, on this particular lot. Outside the hundred-foot buffer to conservation and ultimately, ultimately make it down into the wetlands after it goes through the woods. So I think we've addressed any potential impacts that we could have on your home. Again, when you get a closer look at it, I would hope that the planning board would take input from them as to whether they want to see a fence there or not see a fence there as part of the decision. Again, we don't mind planting some rain tree around here so that we can, you know, less, less of an impact. The house is considerably out behind where your house is here. So it's not, nobody's on top of anybody or anything like that. I mean, I think of all the ones I've done, and I've done a lot of them in town, this one's really one of the simpler ones to do because it's really just a straight driveway and it does meet all the requirements. It's tough to do this in a meeting when I can't show you the plan first.
Just the driveway going off of.
Could you like, I'm playing, I guess, across, I'm sorry.
Spot, spot master seven ninety-seven, there's a, there's a, and it stops right here.
Okay.
Does the driveway enter and then curve down before it goes on?
No, what's going to happen is the existing driveway that goes into 803 right now, we're going to close the entrance to that driveway off and landscape it. And it's going to move closer to your property. But what that does is that actually gets us further away from the top of the hill where, where your property is. It makes it so that it's even safer entrance coming in there because that crest of the hill, it, you know, they're closer in that, so we'll, we'll get a better site distance. We end up with about two hundred and twenty feet of site distance once we move the driveway. So it just, it kind of makes it safer for everybody that's out there. But there will only be one entrance and it really just goes straight in. So as far as lights on the driveway and stuff like that, they actually run parallel to your property line. It's not, they're going to pull in and be shining right at you or anything like that.
We already got the lights from there.
See that?
We already got the lights that the town put up from the, the, the speed camera.
And that does, it does slow people down though, so I don't like those signs, but they do slow people down. So that's, that's a good thing. But you know, again, from a neighborhood impact, I think it's been pretty small and it's just one single house.
Is it, can I ask a silly question?
No silly questions.
Does nobody care about the nature or the wildlife animals that live up there?
We, we.
We've got the deers going to go to our yard every morning.
The deer will be out here and they'll be eating the bushes on this house just like they do at your house. I mean, there's, right now, as you know, behind your house, there's one, there's a, there's a new house on what's known as lot one. I mean, there were three lots, this, this might be a benefit. There were three lots out there that were part of that original subdivision when it went through. These, this, one lot was built on, the subdivision was built. One house was built recently out in the back. There is lot two, which I guess the board can see, lot two kind of wraps around this lot one. Lot two is presently in tax title right now. It is probably going to be taken by the town because the gentleman that owns it does not want to pay the taxes on it. And it's a lot of money to pay the taxes on that lot. So that may very well just end up as a vacant piece. And that's actually the one that's closest behind your house.
Yeah.
Lot one has a little tiny strip of land on the original development because they were going to get water from Norwell. We don't need that strip for anything on this except it's an existing lot, so it just shows on the plan. But there's no intent for us to do anything with that. So really, behind your house, there's nothing that's proposed over in that area. This is really over behind the Murray's house in this location here. So I think, I mean, the location of the house works. It's outside the hundred-foot buffer. We're doing our best. We're in the Water Resource Protection District and we are, everything is a hundred feet away from the wetlands. So, you know, there's really minimal impact from my standpoint as a developer, there's minimal impact on it. But, you know, you're right. I mean, they have a right to build a house on a lot that they've got out there. But if this goes to the town, you're really going to have a number of acres. Over the board is going to see it, but they have, they have pockets there.
Laura, I'm Laura.
You're Laura, I'm Laura Dunn in Madison, also at seven nine seven First Parish Road. And I don't think any, we don't plan to argue that people have a right to build on their property, they absolutely do. Um, and you know, we're obviously, we, you know, we've done a lot of work, you know, the board's gonna look into it. I think the, just a couple, one comment is just to be aware that our, um, stepped in leachant fields abuts uh, the driveway. So I know you're doing a lot of work on the water, but not the proposed driveway, I should say. Um, so we do actually, even currently, have a lot of water coming into our yard. Our front yard looks like swamplings during the spring. Um, our backyard's pretty wet, so we would just wanna make sure that the board takes into account that with the design that we already have a lot of water runoff and, and the leaching field. Um, the other thing I'm just curious about, and I don't know the whole history of how these were parceled, but it just seems like there, when you're building a whole subdivision and you're designing it, that since one of these properties abuts Laurelwood, there should have been a design at some point there was a consideration for a common driveway off of Laurelwood. So I'm kinda trying to understand, I know we talked about it, how we got here in the design, why the developer didn't design a driveway, you know, as part of that bigger design instead of cutting through this area. I know you, I appreciate you're looking out for the wetlands, but it feels like that that situation was created by the developer, didn't have to be that way if they had appropriately factored in where the driveways were gonna be in the original design.
Originally, they had a common driveway, but approval by the zoning board of appeals in Situate when the, when the development was done.
Yeah, yeah.
It was actually the conservation commission that wanted to restrict the access because of the wetlands in this location here. So the, the original developer did try to go through. I guess maybe the good thing is that all three of those houses were gonna access off of that driveway and now they're not.
I thought the original developer accidentally sold a piece of the strip of land that was gonna be for the common driveway to buy the homeowners.
To a homeowner.
And then was rude to that homeowner and the homeowner would use this up and back. I thought that was the actual story.
They don't show up on Christmas Eve and tell someone they have to give you something back.
Yeah, so, so I, yeah.
But, but the reality of the situation was that once they had that done, it was the conservation commission that stepped in and said they don't want you to cross the wetlands.
Okay.
So now, uh, we took that completely out of the mix. It just didn't wanna come under this.
That just the new that piece of land existed, situate didn't want that to cross off of Laurelwood?
That would be a conservation issue.
Yeah, probably not for the wetlands.
Oh, okay.
If.
Not for the wetlands.
But yeah, but that, there was a strip of land that wasn't part of that.
I can address that a little bit further.
Yeah, that, that land's not.
Situate has a common driveway bylaw.
Yeah.
They wanted to try to have the driveway all the way in Situate serving the houses. It ended up that they had to try to push it into Norwell and they had already sold the Norwell lot. So they were trying to get around what, what they wanted to restrict in Situate as far as the wetlands, so. But again, that's all, all that stuff is in the past for what we have here.
Mm-hmm.
But you made a great comment, and it's my favorite comment that people make when they're in a meeting, that they have a water problem. And the only thing I can tell you is, honestly, we can't make it worse. But if we interrupt all this water that's coming from us if it's going to you, we're gonna push that away from where your subject system is. So we can make it better in some instances, but we can't make it worse. So if there's water there now, we might be able to help that out a little bit. But your subject system shouldn't be located near the property line over here because it goes way up the stack.
It's toward the back. It actually pumps up, we have a pump.
Yeah.
But is it in, is it over in this location over here?
It's toward the back.
Yeah, yeah, out in here, okay.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so we're, we're bringing it all the way back until it goes beyond your property line. And any outlet uh, is gonna be over on our property back in here. So it, it should, should not be an impact to your property. We're doing everything we can to try to keep it away from your property, I guess that's the, that's the best way to.
And this piece of land are in Situate, it's in Situate.
This, yeah, it's all in, well, it's all in Situate except for a seven foot by probably eight foot piece. And again, that was done because when they were gonna get water from Norwell, Norwell wanted to have some of this land be in Norwell so they could tax it and put a lien against the property. And I don't know if you're aware, but they ran a water main along the Norwell-Situate line to serve Laurelwood, the whole development.
Yeah.
These were gonna originally be tied into that. Now we're just gonna run a water service through Situate for this one house and place the fire hydrant out at the entrance.
Exactly.
So we don't have to do any of that. Um, and a lot of it's back history, but you know, you have people here, so I wanted you to at least understand what that was.
Okay, if you want to, I, I, I would give you a comic deck, you could certainly understand what you're saying.
Yeah. Sure.
So, Ian, do you have anything to say? So I just, this could be, just be an option then?
Um, yeah, I, I need, I guess I need to know a little bit more about the conception of the stormwater system, or it's, it's quite unclear to me for the plan, what's going on here. Cause I've heard the word swale, I've seen the word rain garden. Uh, I've seen rain garden with sediment four bay, but then I'm also seeing a piece on diagram. I just need a little more definitions and also is this swale and or rain garden an infiltration BMP or is it a conveyance BMP that's more water here or having water go to the very back of the property? I'm not sure what's happening.
So, so the way that the, the system works, the impervious area that's the driveway, right next to that, we have a piece stone diaphragm. Okay, all the contours here running a, a west direction, sorry, an easterly direction this way. So the driveway is cross pitched, it hits that piece stone diaphragm. When that over tops, it over tops into this, which is the, it's a grassed rain garden. We are taking infiltration credit within the hydro cap calculations. Uh, we did soil testing throughout it. When that over tops, which is the hundred year storm event, it over tops at the back right here, you see that we have the overflow, which again is on the lot, the Laurelwood lot property. And at that point, it would flow overland down gradient into the wetlands.
So that whole swale over tops in the back of the lot, three?
Correct.
Correct. Is it, so it, so the piece stone diaphragm, is that also what's inserted as a sediment four bay here?
So sediment four bay is just minimum grating within the bottom of the rain garden. You have to look at the details. It doesn't warrant a separate contour elevation.
Okay.
But it had, it had separate spot elevation, it's extremely shallow. So if you look at the cross section coming off the pavement, uh, you go into a sediment four bay, you know, which is approximately a foot deep, a little less than a foot deep. And that over tops into the bottom of the, uh, the grassed fresh rain garden. With the floor going twenty nine and a half, the floor of the sediment four bay is at one thirty and a half.
Um, what is the approximate depth of the piece stone diaphragm?
Well, it's a two foot depth.
And I'm assuming that will be in some sort of filtration pack.
Yeah, it's wrapped, you get to test out, it's two foot, two foot.
I guess this begs the question to me, as somebody that, someone that can maintain these things, what is the on and app for that piece of the diaphragm? I'm just talking from experience here, that usually catches the majority of the sediment and then it gets pumped up and it's a maintenance kind of just, well, just clogging here, so, just curious how that would be maintained.
So any accumulated sediment, the purpose of the piece stone is exactly that, to trap the sediment. You know, hopefully there isn't that much sediment coming off the driveway. All of the up gradient land area is, is fully vegetated, it's not exposed soil. And we're not gonna be putting sand down on the driveway, don't do that.
It's the soil, it's here.
Actually, that's our soil.
Sure. So, but it's not exposed, uh, soil up there. Any accumulated sediment that you would get in it, you know, you'd strip that off when the time comes and install the piece of it.
Okay, so why would any, the trench should do that for?
It is, the trench isn't, we don't take any infiltration credit for the trench, it's not an infiltrated trench, it purely is just a filter trench. So I mean, you'd have to have, you know, two feet of, of sediment essentially filled up with that then. But my guess, it would probably be the top couple of inches that block up before the bottom plugs up.
Okay. Um, I think after looking at the pictures, I mean, I'm seeing some of the existing conditions. I don't know how, you know, how much survey went into the actual placing of the trees and cataloging the trees and existing, you know, they're a great part of the plan. Um, but after seeing the pictures, it does, I think there's, you know, the pines are nice, but they're kind of whatever. But there's also a lot of oak hardwood trees there. I think that some retention, per the peer reviewers' comments, could be, could be paid to potentially preserving some of those as, when the players brought up about caring for nature because they provide immense ecological benefit, as well as they're beneficial to stormwater by soaking up a ton of water, um, in the root zone. So that's one thing I would say is that maybe if it's possible to get a little bit more information about the existing trees there and potentially what could be preserved, particularly, I, I mean, obviously I heard, you know, I don't expect you to redesign whole driveway, jog it left or right to save trees, but you know, in that grading area, i- is there something that could be done there that will also lead to a more aesthetically pleasing, you know, stormwater, you know, BMP, because it'll be more, look less like a BMP and more like a natural land area. Um, and then my other comment, just my opinion is that I think that this could be a very good area for Steve's, you know, he's already brought up that they'd be willing to do greenery in lieu of fencing. I think this would be a perfect example in a top situ to do more of a bioinfiltration swale or something that's heavily planted and with the intent of restoring it to a native, a state of state rather than just doing a lawn grass soil, um, I think that would be better. Just, I mean, I haven't heard much of the neighbors' comments, but just, just a couple I've heard, I think that that might be more amenable to them as well as be a easier to maintain and more quality stormwater, uh, BMP. That being said, should you choose to, I mean, I don't know all the technicalities, but I think should you choose to not heed my, my opinion and go with the grassed infiltration area, I, I don't, I think maybe we should remove the word rain garden cause it just doesn't seem right to call it a rain garden and it's just gonna be a turf grass, um, infiltration area.
Would you like to know? Yes.
I'd like to do one more thing if I can. I, I had, under Karen's direction, I took the larger pictures. I gave you those while I walked in and walked out. Before I had done that, I, I knew that trees were gonna be an issue. So I originally went out and took some pictures of some of the trees that were gonna get removed in the area. And I apologize that these are smaller photos, but I think if you look at it closely, I'll show them to Ben first, I guess, cause, cause he's got a pretty good concern.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Is this the trees just in the driveway you're gonna make or is this a great, for the current lots?
Yes, yeah, this is, these ones are just for the driveway, this is just for the driveway.
So there's no concern for the trees you're gonna take down to make some mud there?
It's not that there's no concern for the trees, it's just this is the driveway that I have the pictures of here.
But, but to be clear, the driveway is the entire driveway easement, it's not just where the pavement is going to go? Okay, I understand.
Okay.
So, and if I can, and you can pass them down if you want, but there's a cedar tree that's in the way. This half, full half of it's dead and this half is live, it doesn't really make much sense. The largest tree that's out there that's partway down the driveway is loaded with dead broken branches on this. So that's not really a substantial tree. The turnaround, once we moved the turnaround, it ended up in the area where there's a clump of trees. Uh, there's like no good branches or anything and these are all clouding each other out. Uh, up near the top, they're okay, but everything down underneath, this is right where the turnaround is there. But it's the best location for the turnaround. I didn't think that the trees were really that significant there. And out near the street, there's one tree, this is completely dead out in here. Uh, and this is rotting right here, but there are branches on the top of it that are okay. But I can't imagine that this is gonna be lasting too long, okay, that's the longest entrance.
It's not long enough.
So, e- even though, yes, there are some trees that have to come along, you know, come up along the driveway is. Uh, and as well, I wanted to comment for the, for the neighbors that are on the east side, there was a tree that came down onto this piece of property, if anybody came out there to see it. Pretty substantial the tree. And they cut down part of it. I'll try and work with the owner of this property to get the rest of it so that you guys don't have to. And we'll see if we can pull that out once the driveway is going in.
Yep.
Because it's, it's enormous, it's, it's big. Uh, so, and I wanted to let you guys know that anyway, so, and if you wanna see it on the lot, it, it can be the letter.
Well, do you have any comments?
Have you, uh, if you've done this stormwater analysis, what, what's the before and after condition going over to the east?
I have my range back. All I can tell you is it's less.
Yes, the, so on the one year storm event, we have point five eight cubic feet per second. Post development is point two nine. The two year, existing is one point six three, we're going to one point two two. Ten year, three point five three, goes to three point two six. A hundred year goes from seven and a half to seven point oh.
So it's, uh, there's a slight reduction in each storm?
Correct.
Yeah. And that's across the entire lot?
Correct.
Yeah, everything slopes right towards where this, this, this four bay trench is gonna end up going.
Uh, does anybody have anything to say, uh, on that? You can raise your hand, please. I don't stand any pictures, I get a clock after the door. Yeah, I'm hanging down on the boundary of eight eleven First Parish Road. I'm, this is a silly question to it, but do we even have to say anything? We listen to everything everybody has to say.
Yes, we do.
Yes. But once John Murray, he sold up to get that driveway built, is it not money wins that we don't have to say? He, he would not be able to get into that lot and John Murray did not need the money and sell pieces of his lands because that's exactly why all neighbors on the other side built that wall. So you have to get approval from all the people that live there. But since John Murray decides to sell a piece of his, we don't have to say it, right? Or do we?
I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know who John Murray is.
But it's the owner.
Since he's the owner of the piece of land.
The owner of the piece of land, he's, there's no way he could get in and go.
Which, which, I'm sorry, there's a lot of pieces of land here, which you mentioned, we've talked about.
The one where the driveway was going down.
The easement, cause he can clearly not get in, he's missed the top one, cannot get in.
No, but he's, he sold, he sold the property.
He, he owns a easement, he sold the easement.
And you cannot, you're not, one second, you're not allowed to get in from Laurelwood, right? That's not, which would be illogical to do. And you cannot get in anywhere else because, like he said, it's a Christmas story. But it's actually a neighbor on the other side that owned that piece of wall there. So you would have to get approval from several people to get in. But now that the owner of this property needs the money, he bought off a piece from him and now we can go. So I'm just curious personally, do we have to say now or he, he sold it and we can go home?
Well, we don't have to say, I'm the seller.
No, he sold, he sold it to, to people.
We, we have to say in the, in the permitting of the common driveway that's proposed. As long as the owner has control of the, the land, then they can post it, it has to meet requirements.
There's no environmental law, so there's no, nothing like that?
Well, there are environmental laws and all that, but as long as they're not violating.
They can clean up the floors.
They need to, you know, meet the requirements.
That's why, can I, can I make, that's why they have a storm, that's why they have a stormwater permit.
I would just.
We have certain thresholds in Situate, so they, they trigger those, so we are looking, that's why we're looking at the stormwater. And then the zoning bylaw has requirements for a common driveway that they are, that they're, that they have to meet. And so, I mean, if you look at the zoning bylaw and look at the town general bylaws for the zoning for the stormwater, they have to meet those requirements.
We don't have the control of John Murray selling, you know.
The people that own the land at the house, is that you? Do you own the land at the house?
I do not own any of this, like, I control easements.
That land, was that land part of the subdivision Laurelwood?
Yeah, yeah, I had stated there were three lots here that were, they, that were gonna access off that original.
Yeah. So they're all part of Laurelwood.
They were all originally approved when the Laurelwood subdivision was approved.
So whoever, whoever owned that land originally.
Yes.
The entire subdivision.
Yes.
They made a ton of money. The house, the house is just huge houses all the way down that road. They made a ton of cash. What's the point of selling one more? I mean, what, what's, what do you need the extra cash for? I don't understand. It's, it's, so one man came, liquidated his final piece of real estate, he could build another house, get a little bit more pollution, kill a few more wild animals, I mean, what's, I don't understand.
Well, we're, we're, we're not, we're not really gonna kill any wild animals while we're in here.
Yeah, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen.
Okay, Steve, this is a kind of a thoughtful question. Uh, if you own a property and you mean all the bylaws, we totally hear what you're saying, we hear it all the time. We do have bylaws and we do our best that we care to enforce it, but if you own a piece of property, you can build on it as long as you stick with your bylaws and you, you follow the rules.
We're admirers.
We totally understand what you're saying, it's, it's beautiful out there, even though, but I know it is.
Yeah.
Um, and hopefully builders are making it pretty when you need it. Uh, if you're asking my personal opinion, I would go to bed, I would put a fence up there, I, I try to actualize that a lot of the issues you could deal with. So I would like to ask the board want a plan? This is what, want a planting plan before.
This is what, want a planting plan before the next meeting, please, for it. Okay, so.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
We will get into that.
Okay, I have to ask, I have to ask you, I request it out of the upper management. I, I think that the board would agree with me. He said, you don't bring any plans without a way to pay for the cash. It just needs to be.
Again, what we had was we have on there, we had a proposed fence if the planning board required it. So when you first file for one of these common driveways, we have to come in and we have to ask the opinion of the board on certain things. So it can't be done in one night. They can't just close this and say, we're all set. We've got to ask their opinion. So now they're basically saying, we don't want a fence. I'm hoping that these neighbors here will agree that if we do some planting, it would be better than a fence.
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate that because I really think it will be better.
We'd also prefer the, the uh, the grass water mitigation or, I'm sorry, the uh, the wildlife mitigation as opposed to bioinfiltration.
Bioinfiltration, that, that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What you said.
More vegetation. That's what you, more vegetation. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, but in that, I mean, Greg and I was, but I was strongly, and just make a note about planting, planters is gonna collar future insurance, I strongly for someone like this, advocate, explore and advocate the use of seed mixes. Because you know, like, you know, you could get a wet meadow basin, seed mixes, running the wet meadow fences, all sorts of stuff you can do that over the course of three or four or five years is gonna really look fabulous compared to just a lawn. And it's gonna be way less maintenance. The only thing with that is I would ask that you follow the best management practices. Don't just put the seed down and believe, make that part of the open house that, you know, in that three.
It's repetitive.
Yeah, in that three, five year for a face of a seed mix that the BMPs, that the seed mix player provides you with it. Those are followed by your landscape or stormwater contract. Or just have weeds.
Right, exactly, but that, like in Tupperware.
And, and just.
Like in Tupperware.
Sure. Sorry, I wasn't in Tupperware, sorry. Um, just for clarification if I can, Steve, so you understand as well uh, out here. Uh, John Murray owns this lot right here in Bowl. It's basically square. And we have not purchased any land from John Murray. All I've done is I've secured an easement to access across his property. So he still owns the property. We get the benefit of using the property for a driveway. So that's the agreement that I had with the Murrays. Uh, and it's done, it's done all the time. I mean, I, I've done a, a lot of these driveways in town. Uh, but there is no ownership change as far as that's concerned. Uh, Simeone Properties.
Is, is it an actual, you actually own the easement or it's an option?
I, I have an option to purchase the easement once I get the approval from the planning board because I wouldn't buy the easement if I can't get the approval.
And what's the cost of the easement?
Uh, that's, that's, that I can't get into.
But that's not important to us. And that's not important to us. We don't, sorry.
Can you say something? Okay.
Someday I could approach you to get an easement from you, maybe to get somewhere else back here. You know, it, it all depends on how much money's worth of, if it was a negotiated deal and it worked out with both people that were involved in the deal.
We, that's not. Karen, do you want a motion for us?
Sure.
Okay, um, okay. I will to accept the last request to continue over here for the stormwater permit. A public meeting for the site plan administrative review, the common driveway of eight oh three First Paris Road and Laurelwood Drive Lot Three, until July twenty eighth, twelve twenty two at six thirty PM. And continue the time for action for the town court until August twelfth, twenty twenty two. Senator.
Ms. Lambert, second. Ms. Lambert, did you second?
Yes, subject.
Okay, all favor.
Aye.
Mr. McHan, back.
Oh, hi, yeah, I said.
Thank you. Okay, that is all favor.
Thank you very much.
And it will be continued until, no, it will continue until July twenty eighth at six thirty PM.
Then help me know when you hear it.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's the next meeting. I can't tell you if there'll be another one after.
You won't be notified.
You're not.
This is your, your notification is today, now.
July.
July twenty eighth, it's so starting.
July eighth. So just make sure you watch the, you posted town website for the planning board meetings.
You know, we. They'll post.
The agenda will get posted the week before the meeting. And you can also, if you're the, how the planning board wants to see what is that.
Okay, so are we hold on to like any reporting, any of our.
Yeah. I would say.
Stay, you want to stay. We gotta look on.
Yeah, two hands ahead of time.
Okay, now the letter two hour, two year road.
You guys have a plan in front of you because it's gonna be easier to follow. On this one, and hopefully this one will go very quickly.
You just, there's no conversation.
For the record, Steve Yorhman, um, I am actually part owner of this property uh, as well as uh, Donna, she owns part of the property as well. And there are three owners of one of the larger parcels that's involved in this. Uh, D'Angelo, McCready and Rudy and Ian Gerhardt. Um, what we're doing here is we are combining and dividing some land court property as well as uh, recorded property. So we've got registered property and recorded property. So it's a little difficult. Hopefully I'll be able to explain this and you guys will understand. But as you look at yourselves, everybody has the same color coded copy. And as you see the color codes, that's what's gonna end up being the final lots, okay? And through the division, I guess if you look at me for just a minute here, this piece that comes through the middle and comes down through Donna and Neil's house in this location is all land court property. The parcel in the front says unregistered on two, on two parcels. I actually own the frontage along there. And in order to, to divide this, we've got to provide two Mylar plans. One that goes to the land court and one that goes to the registry of deeds. So there's a series of notes, general notes on how these are going to be divided and then recombined together. Um, so ultimately, I mean, I can go through each of the notes if you want, but I think you can see basically what's happening is we, we end up with parcel A, land court lot three, and parcel C is gonna become one buildable lot that contains twenty thousand plus square feet of land and meets all the requirements. And the, also the parcel that I have in the front, which is parcel B, unregistered together with land court lot four. And unregistered parcel D, which is in yellow, that becomes the second lot. The third lot, which does not have any frontage, we're actually cutting the frontage off, which is in blue, is actually a parcel that is hopefully going to be donated to the conservation commission. The town owns a budding land on the east of this, and they also own land that comes down to the south. So you can see them as a, as a butters around the property, as well as the town has a, an existing lot. I think it was taken for tax title, uh, which goes up to Shattwell Road. So that'll give them, the town, just a much larger piece out there as well. Um. Um, I am actually doing a land swap uh, with Donna and Neil on this piece here. So you can see at the bottom uh, left hand corner, there's a small piece down here that has the name of Yorhman on it. That's approximately three thousand square feet that I'm going to be giving to them to add to their frontage. And you can see the Z line. So their lot ultimately will be the pink lot that you see in here. And they are swapping with me for this small portion, uh, that's shown in yellow up in here, which is again partially land court, partially unregistered. So the only thing that's changed on the plan that I have right here and the plan that you guys have, we did hear back from land court, I don't know if it was this morning or yesterday. And when you do a land court plan like this, you can't use the term that they're going to be combined because land court land doesn't combine with unregistered property. So we had to change the words to say held in common ownership. So the Mylar that you'll be signing if we're endorsed tonight, it has those three words in note number thirteen. Um, really quickly, I'll just go through and show you, um, the second Mylar that you've, you've got, just ease it really. Um, is the land court uh, parcel which does not have the registry block on it because they do their own signature stuff there. Uh, and that's about it. They, they wanted us to shade this lighter because they're more concerned just with what's in dark, which is the land court portion itself. So that's the two Mylars that I'd like to have endorsed. If you have any questions, I'd be, I'd answer them. It's pretty.
Which parcel are you gonna give to conservation?
The parcel in Bull.
Okay, okay.
Um, yeah, just. You said, do, do we have, maybe it's your turn, do we have approval from all these different owners to do this?
Yes, they signed, they signed the application, now all of these were there, yeah.
From everybody, everybody on this list, okay.
And Donna, Donna and probably Neil are on this meeting as well.
So what the board didn't get is that there are two Mylars. We learned yesterday, as Steve said, he, he heard that from the land court. You just, originally there was one Mylar, but now there's two because they heard that from the land court about what the land court wants. And um, there is just a change in the language there and the lighter tone on the one that's going to land court. So the bottom line is these all combined to make three lots. They have access and frontage. So it's, it's, it's an endorseable, endorseable plan. It's just that you can't combine registered and unregistered land and against it, we're to handle.
And no common ground.
And no.
Excellent, please.
All right, do we have a motion?
Well, this, this is a subdivision.
Yes, we're.
We're not endorsing anything else.
These are four A plans and you're not endorsing, you're not saying anything conforms with the zoning regulations.
Right.
No, absolutely. There's no approval, it's only an endorsement.
I vote for an endorsement, approval not required. A plan titled Plan of Land Zero. One four six and one five four Tilden Road, assessors parcels thirty nine dash twenty six dash thirty A, thirty nine dash twenty six dash thirty and thirty nine dash twenty six dash thirty two A. Situate Mass prepared by Jason Scott, PLS of Moore Sanctuary and Company, Inc. For applicant J. Stephen Yorhman and owners J. Stephen Yorhman, Neil F. O'Donnell and Donna Sheekey, and Marilyn D'Angelo, Joan and Regina Creedie, and Rudy and Ian Gerhardt, dated June third, twenty twenty two. As the division of land shown on every the company plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan is from each other, at least the distance presently required out of the South Situate Zone bylaw on the public way of Tilden Road. But the planning board's statement added that the planning board endorsement of the plan is not a determination as to the performance with zone regulations.
One second.
Okay.
All favor.
Um. Um, and then I think.
Well, I see, uh, senior center, is anybody looking to the senior center?
There are.
Uh-huh. Oh, okay.
So just give me a moment so I can unmute some people here. Maybe we can get them to turn there. Um, anyone from the senior center, if you could please turn on your video so I know to, to unmute you. Mr. Kirby, I don't know whether you've accepted, there we go. So I send all of you unmutes. You can mute yourself until you need to speak. So, so there's no background noise if that works.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh. You can hear me?
Yes, you can, Karen.
Okay, uh, good evening, uh, board members. Um, Steve Kirby from the Vertex Companies. We are the OPM for the Situate Senior Center. Um, initially, I'm gonna be speaking on behalf of the applicant, the uh, town of Situate and the COA. Uh, as part of the approval for the Situate Senior Center, planning board had issued a decision dated nineteen eighteen, uh, two thousand and nineteen, uh, item number seventeen, which was to have a monitoring, uh, a six month monitoring of the parking uh, for the lot that was designed for the senior center and uh, an adjacent lot along the A wing uh, of the school. Um, in, in order to determine whether uh, the implementation of the future sixteen space lot was needed that was uh, potentially in the southwest corner of property. Um, that monitoring was done once the uh, seniors tenant was fully operational and that ran from August second, uh, twenty twenty one to uh, January thirty first, twenty twenty two. Um, Park Corporation Traffic Engineer, um, took that data and issued report dated uh, five twenty seven twenty two, which um, you should have, uh, sort of synopsizing that report. Um, essentially, uh, it, it, it states that, you know, the overall campus has parking for peak periods of, of time that the senior center, um, senior center's adjacent lot uh, gets full. However, uh, it's not necessarily conducive for the seniors, especially ones that have mobility issues and safety if the lots that are, um, the spaces that are open are in the uh, location of the, of the tennis courts or, or the little schoolhouse. Um, so having, having said that, and, and really that was, that was the task at hand for meeting item seventeen was to, to, to do the monitoring and generate that report. But, and, and uh, Linda and JD can, can correct me if I'm wrong. Essentially, at this point, regardless of the report, uh, the COA wants to move forward with implementing that um, that future lot uh, there or, or potentially somewhere else.
Karen? Um, well, here, I, I think we would like a presentation of some of the numbers um, first before we go into a discussion about the um, about the uh, whether you should construct the, an additional parking area or not. Um, I, I think we want a, an explanation of how the numbers were arrived at and what the numbers show.
Okay, for that, I, I will turn that over to Amy Archer from Pair Corporation.
Thanks, Steve. Hi, yes, Amy Archer with Park Corporation, traffic engineer for the project. I was involved with the planning and design as well as this follow-up monitoring review. Um, so we took the data that was obtained by the volunteers of the senior center for the six month period that Steve mentioned. And that accounted for vehicles in both primary senior center lot, which has seventy spaces currently, and the A wing spaces, which is another fourteen. So there's a total of eighty four spaces on the campus that are primarily used for the senior center. Uh, and then there are three other lots across the campus. Uh, we labeled the northeast one, the rec center lot, and then there are two near the tennis courts, tennis court north and tennis court south. Uh, so we looked at all of the data. We found that over the six month period, there were a hundred and twenty two days within that because obviously the senior center is only open during the week and we didn't have counts on holidays. Um, so of the hundred and twenty two days, there were fourteen days where the primary parking lot was at or over capacity. And there were eleven days where the A wing lot was at or over capacity. Um, if we looked at both, um, cumulatively, there were four days in that period where both lots were over capacity. Um, so then Steve and I had had some conversations about, you know, the initial number that was presented previously was if we were gonna build a supplemental lot, sixteen spaces was identified. And we were trying to determine if that was adequate for the days that the existing senior center lots are over capacity. Um, the guidelines that we were given from the planning board initially were just to count these parking lots for the six month period. There weren't counts in the other lots on the site. So we weren't, from the data that the volunteers gathered, able to analyze how many vehicles were being displaced to other locations on the site or possibly even just um, not able to attend that day that they wanted to and had to return home. So we did two days of supplemental counts after the initial six months to try to see if we could help quantify what that overflow value was. Um, so we went out and did counts in April and then again in June, uh, we tried to look at. We tried to look at two different occurrences. One, on a day where the senior center activities overlap with the food pantry activities. So that was looking at like, when is there a prime use on other portions of the site where overflow from the senior center may not be able to find spaces in those other lots. And then we looked at a day where they had a large lunch event overlapping with other programming, and we definitely saw a peak in a capacity. And we tried to observe how many overflow spaces there were from that. So prior to that lunch program hitting, the main parking lots for the senior center were under capacity and the other lots cumulatively had eleven vehicles in them between that rec center lot, the tennis court north and the tennis court south. And then once the lunch crowd started to flow in for the senior center and the main senior center and A-Wing lot both reached capacity, the other lots combined went up to twenty-seven vehicles. So we actually saw an increase in use of those other lots of exactly sixteen vehicles, coincidentally kind of. So we do think if they're going to go additional parking, that sixteen seems like it's right about the right number. That's the amount of people that we've observed trying to get to the senior center on those peak event days that aren't able to park in the main senior center lot or the A-Wing lot that have to overflow to the other sites. We did not, over the course of the time, see any event where the whole site was over capacity, where every parking lot was just completely full and people couldn't get onto the site at all. But as Steve mentioned, we're also trying to keep in mind the distance that some of these parking spaces are to the senior center use and the lighting in those areas. So we had identified two things key to that. We felt like the parking lots near the tennis courts were the furthest away on the site as a whole and the least visible. The rec center lot, however, the one on the northeast of the site, is visible and is not much farther away from the senior center than where the previously identified overflow parking area could be. So we think, you know, you may have options of where on the site do you try to build out those extra spaces? Could they possibly be at the rec center and you build westward towards the quad area? Or do you build out the original area? I think that's up to the town to decide. I know we were also informed not that long ago that there may be plans to renovate some of the field space at the southern portion of the site, so I think that would need to be incorporated as well. But overall, the numbers showed that there were, there are days where the senior center is overflowing the existing two lots that are designated for that use. If an overflow space was going to be built, we think the sixteen spaces that was previously identified would be sufficient.
So can you explain to us, because the previous, can you explain to us about the programming? How the programming is occurring so that you don't have, minimize conflicts?
Well, honestly, the programming for this first year is just, has been building. I mean, it certainly is based on typical demand and scheduling logistics. The Tuesday conflicts or overcapacity dates often, most often, were due to a monthly, only monthly men's breakfast that we hold and might have had a speaker that was of great interest. We still have a couple of regular things going on. So that happens at the same time, of course, that the food pantry was also in use, but that has been our regular schedule. Another day that only monthly does result in that overcapacity is a large art presentation. Again, it's monthly, we do still have an exercise class, and it bumps up against lunch. So there is, we have figured out, you know, is an overlap. Sometimes it's only a fifteen-minute overlap off. Some patrons leave and others are arriving for their next activity, but it is still significant because it prevents people from being able to park or park near the building.
Has the programming been considered to be changed so you don't have the overlaps?
Well, that's just not always possible. We did have a game, a game group on a Tuesday morning that because of the men's breakfast, after a few months, they asked if they could move to Thursday. We agreed to that, and frankly, sometimes Thursday is still difficult. So it seems like the right time, but when you're looking for blocks of one hour or two hours and sometimes are not able to have the preferred times. I mean, it's sometimes based on instructor availability or otherwise. So yes, we do, but we are attempting to meet demands and utilize the building. It's certainly not filled to capacity when the parking lot is. So we are, yes, we are trying to coordinate. We have tried to do a little bit more in the afternoon as able, but oftentimes, again, an exercise class in the morning and something else. A history class that was over capacity in the afternoon. Started small in the morning because we had to open up a second session and, you know, and it's grown. That's on a Wednesday. So the lunches, and it's, it's a little bit funny because the Tuesday lunches are actually the smallest of the attendance, you know, we are up to maybe fifty people on some days, Wednesday and Thursday maybe, whereas Tuesdays is closer to twenty-five or thirty. But again, the other activities on the site, not just ours, have, have just contributed to that appearing as an overcapacity day, even though it actually isn't activity-wise for us, so.
So I took your data and I sliced and diced it. And I only find two days that the senior lot is at capacity at seventy-two or seventy-three people. They're not on a Wednesday or Thursday. Your data does not suggest that you're at capacity or over on the data that I have. Not that it's, I mean, I won't say all the time, but it's very minimal. So I, I don't, I don't know, I'm not saying that the information is not accurate, but I don't know how true it is. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
You know.
I just can't see that that happens. I know that when we go by, it always looks very crowded. And the other thing I think that you need to keep in mind is that you're part of a campus and you need to share all of the resources on that campus. And.
Well, we were given seventy.
So I would say, I would say that one of the biggest mistakes that were made at the senior center was taking out that circular driveway in the front of the building. I think that that was, probably lost twenty spaces.
Well, I guess I have, you know, the question is, what is it, what is it gonna look like in a year or two from now, right? Is that the question I have is, how is the current programming compared to where you think you're going? And what kind of additional demand you might have for the use of the senior center?
We are asked daily, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I guess what I'm asking is, do you think you've reached sort of a levelized sort of programming? Or do you think there's gonna be increases in the next few years, given that, you know, the senior center hasn't been open that long?
There will definitely be increases or could be if we had the capacity to do so. We're asked daily if we can add, you know, another exercise class or really just looking to be more well-rounded. Yes, it would increase, it should increase.
And then you have the added problem, right? It's a campus that nobody's planned for, right? It's just sort of organically grown up. So, you know, this, this feels like another piece of just sort of the organic growth. Because we don't know what anybody has planned for the rest of the building either. And in fact, when we first started talking about the senior center, there wasn't any real discussion about the food bank ending up in there. I mean, we, we had asked the question, what's the master plan right now? It wasn't a master plan. Still feels like there's no master plan. So, you know, programming new parking spaces for something that hasn't been fully thought out feels like it might be, you know, sort of too early. And it would be good to have a much broader plan about the full use of the campus. And, you know, as you said, people are talking about, you know, expanding the fields and all of that up there. So that would cut into what you do, you park on that study as well. But it feels like we're piecemealing this as, as we did, as we said when we asked for the study back when you originally asked for planning approval.
Well, I mean, I can only address what, really what we're doing in terms of a campus. The seventy-space parking lot, I understand, is ours to utilize our patrons. Now, we also have staff who, very quickly, we realized, well, the staff can't park here because the staff has to park as far away as possible to give the spaces to the patrons when able. So we try to do that, but we are restricted even then because recreation, even though that lot for most of the year is, is very underutilized. So we do try to use that lot, but do need to ask permission. At least that's been the, that's been what's happened so far. I don't know if that was the original intention. The fourteen spaces behind the A-Wing are now at least competed for on Tuesday mornings, which wasn't anticipated, so.
Why they, why is there competition? The food pantry is supposed to be parking elsewhere.
This is a drive-through.
It's a drive-through food pantry. They're parking closer to the church.
They have several volunteers and many.
And that volunteers is supposed to be parking at the church.
Well, it appeared to them as though probably they could utilize those spaces, so it's.
Well, they can't. That is the whole agreement.
Well.
Well, I would give it some protection.
No, it's something, it's up to.
It's not ideal.
It's up to the town administration, it's certainly not up to you, it's certainly not up to the senior center to enforce rules that were not made by them.
No, the other question I have is, where do you park the vans?
We do park the vans in the lot in the corner, in the back corner.
I would suggest, Linda, that you go back to where you used to park them, down at the fire station on First Parish Road.
Okay, well, I, I want, I want the vans near us. That's something that we, we need to keep an eye on those vans. And I will say that as the transportation services have increased, just as our activities have, we are often utilizing two, if not three, of the vans on a good part of the day. So they have become less of an issue on those times when activities are occurring.
Are you suggesting that they are not safe down at the, at the First Parish at the fire department? Would they work hard for years, years?
It's nice to have the vans on the premises for our drivers and when.
I think your drivers should park at First Parish and bring up the van to pick up people, et cetera, because it takes up too many spaces.
It's three spaces and, like I said, they are utilized most of the days at this point, but I disagree with it. I just.
I think that the vans need to park, they need to park further away and they need to park better. Today, when we drove through at lunchtime, the van wasn't even parked right. It wasn't even in a space. It's taken up two spaces. And that's an observation that I've made on a couple instances. The van takes up two spaces because it's not parking right. Why can't the van be parked further down in the A area so that the patrons can be using the spaces up closer to the senior center?
Actually, I did bring that up early on and the recreation director did not want that to be the case because they might utilize that and their busy time is coming up for the summer. So that's when we were first addressing those needs. That certainly could happen during the lesser-used months, but they did not want us to do that.
So then why can't it go in the recreation parking lot that you indicate is being underutilized?
That's a conversation we need to have, I think collectively, with the other parties on the campus, I guess.
Well, you know what, this is the thing. We are operating, unfortunately, in silos. No one is talking to anyone else. And maybe, once a month, you all between recreation, food pantry, senior center, and whomever else should have a meeting to discuss what you're doing, where you're going, and how you're gonna get there. So you're all on the same page. Because as far as I'm concerned, this is telling me nothing. From what I have generated, from what I have read, the parking there is adequate. It's adequate.
Not if you talk to a senior, Anne, not if you talk to a senior.
It's not adequate because maybe there aren't enough handicap spaces. But that, but if we put in more handicap spaces, we are discriminating against other people that wanna park close to the building.
I think, I think the case, if I'm not mistaken, is if we put in more handicap spaces, then we're under the coded requirement for the building. We have added, I will just say, to try to mitigate some of this, we've added some friendlier senior citizen parking signs to try to encourage people that are more able to park further away and give those spaces to people who have more of a mobility issue. We've also utilized the techs work off seniors who were doing the parking monitoring plan. One of them is my valet, so on certain days, he is standing out front and asking people if they want to park their car further away so that then they can walk into the building. I would like, I proposed to purchase a golf cart, which actually has been done at other senior centers so that we could help people get to the building that might park further away. You know, I speak to Mara when I have a need, I speak to the food pantry Marie when things are happening, but, but the conflicts remain nonetheless.
But can I ask you what time the lunch crowd starts coming in?
Well, lunch is at noon. The lunch crowd, some realize that if they want a parking space closer to the building, they are coming early. So they are coming earlier than is necessary. And they don't mind, they sit, they might have a cup of coffee, so some of them are coming earlier than necessary. Eleven fifteen, maybe. But not everybody, and some wait and come at noon, but that is the most done.
I don't think we have enough information about what's happening in overall issues. So, I mean, at some point, people are gonna have to get together with Mr. Woodrow. It was on vacations, but I can get him by him to come. Use it or lose it, vacation season is here. So I think that Kerry, we somehow, we get others with when he's around, or.
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to get him, I'll try to get Mr. Woodrow into a meeting and, but, I mean, one of the other conditions was that there was supposed to be coordination of the programming. And so what the planning board needs to try to understand, is this coordination of the programming happening?
Yes, this coordination of the programming between the rec department and the senior center, we generally know what the programming is, yes. I know what theirs is. You know, ours operates primarily during the day, they understand that. Theirs operates primarily at night and more, and more in the summertime during the day. So I am aware of that. At this point, we really haven't conflicted with the recreation department.
Your major conflict, you're saying that is with the food pantry?
That's a one-day, potentially two-day. You know, the Thursday afternoons are not as significant as the Tuesday mornings are.
Well, that's a, that's a new, Mr. Woodrow can have to address.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have one comment, not particularly more to the planning board, not particularly to this issue right now, but it goes back to what Steve was talking about earlier. I think obviously we have, you know, this was really sold as build a camp, build a campus, which I was not really a fan of that branding to begin with, but that's besides the point. I think right now we have the water treatment plant coming down the pipe. It's a huge municipal project, you have a lot of water stuff going on. But again, back to Steve's point, I really have a hard time just picking a way at this site. It has the whole enormous valley for the town, and we have the building that's still just sparsely mothballed sitting there. That's part of building a campus, so we sold no planning board. So I would, I mean, I don't know if it falls in our lap, I think planning for should, I would say, and how municipal projects are done. I think it's the charge by the state that commissions planning boards, but we always seem to be left out of that and hear about it later in site by, but that's besides the point. I would like to see the public buildings commissioned or that still exists.
Yes, I think I do like.
I would like to see this somebody, you know, if we have a time, maybe us. If not, then the public buildings commission. I would like to see this taken up again, as soon as we get over the pump with the water treatment stuff. This, this needs to happen.
So I can direct you, Mrs. Bridget and I are on a committee for a reuse. That stuff is still on. So I can direct you, Mrs. Bridget and I are on a committee for a reuse. That stuff is still on by, we have we had huge plans, we had drugs, it it still exists, it's still there, five, six, seven years later, whatever it was. But we had an absolute campus in place, block eight school, had a broadened border selectmen who said, thank you, we're not gonna give you any money, goodbye. And that was the end of it, so we do need to bring it up again.
Well, because now we're having inf, it's not infighting, but we're having conflicts between recreation, senior center
Yeah.
Yeah.
Full fans.
And you know, there's still, there's people that are coming, tennis courts that aren't recreation, but people that go to use the the field, the running.
Little red schoolhouse.
Yeah, historical sites, it's just, it's um, it's kind of a mess, and we have a building that I drive every day.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we can fix it.
So it brings a tear to your eye to see it just sitting there, you know.
Well. Yeah.
I will just.
I would call them the worst.
Yeah, with plywood on the windows, go figure.
So I guess right now, we'll be scared as care, we'll have to talk to Mr. Woodrow and see if we can't have some kind of sundown and.
Well, you may, I just wanna, I myself would like to close with just the mission of the senior center is, you know, we we are, we are attempting to to do that, and that's that's what we're doing, trying to utilize the building, provide um activities that promote the stimulation of the seniors and and for that, even if it's fourteen days that it's over capacity, it certainly could be double that if we continue with our mission, so I do think you just need to consider that and and we'd like to be able to do that with the seniors in mind.
Thank you. All right, so we'll um I'll be in touch, I'll talk to uh Mr. Woodrow and we'll see if we have to have maybe an offline meeting first before we come back to the planning board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Thank you, Amy, Rachel, Eve.
Thank you.
Bye.
Great job, Linda.
Thanks.
Okay. Let's let zoning a public workshop.
Can you say?
I'm just okay.
Yeah, step back.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, so um this is our public workshop for zoning changes for the um for the fall special town meeting, which is considerably earlier than it normally is because of the water treatment plant. Um so the planning board is proposing three articles. The first one, oh, I'm gonna just take them and note to the order, setback, step back. Um is to clarify that the building height um matches the tables in the zoning bylaw. It's not the the card finger makes somebody think that the building height can be taller than it really can because the previous other paragraphs in the zoning bylaw say you have to use seven fifty point six to get your height. So we want to clarify the table. We went corrected the As and Bs, Steve, uh how how you have them. So I think this is really a very, a very quick, very simple fix to the bylaw that's created confusion on a on a couple potential projects, so I think that it's worthwhile to do it now.
It's housekeeping more than anything.
And it's housekeeping.
That's, it's just, it's a better graphic, it's more clear.
It's making it match with the wording already in the bylaw that says the height limits are as in seven fifty point six. It's it's making it match that.
Right, and that's good.
Um. The next one is that um as a result of some projects, um the planning board is feeling that penthouses really don't belong to situate, so we're proposing you you ask that the uh penthouse be eliminated, so I um proposing elimination of the penthouse, renumbering the sections in the building height section and taking out the um special dwelling unit section for penthouses.
Sounds like a nice idea, but maybe not for us.
Right, yeah, it's just not practical.
And then um the planning board wanted to redo the common driveway bylaw. And your your desire was to change the length of common driveways, add more design and construction criteria for common driveways. Um so I resent, you were resent um the common driveway bylaw. Um it it's the same, it's the same as last time, as what you saw last, you know, two weeks ago, except on the advice of town council and after talking with the town administrator, we firmly believe that an applicability clause should be added um to say the provisions of section seven twenty common driveway shall not apply to any application filed with the planning board in town clerk pursuant to section twenty, seven twenty prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And so I realized very late this afternoon that I put the applicability clause as section seven twenty ten. That's gonna move, it's gonna move up a ton because it can't be too applicability. So that that's just a quick, that's just a quick thing. It doesn't, wouldn't change anything with the legal advertising. And you know, when we present the public area, it I'll just, I'll just change it so that the applicability moves on. But I I think that the applicability is is needed here.
And why is that?
Because we have projects in the pipeline already that are not gonna be completed um.
Yeah, it will always be the case with knowing, so.
Well, and the planning board did an applicability clause a couple years ago when it changed the bylaw to the D C N. So you, because projects were in the pipeline. So both town council and the town administrator felt that it's if you do it one time, it's it's probably fair to do it, you know, a second time.
Well, that's only we think. It's a precedent we should set. I don't necessarily agree with that myself. Yeah, I don't think we should. We're gonna, we're gonna have to do this with everything we do now. Everything's gonna have to be set up that way. I I just don't think that's you know, we did it till last time. I don't think the expectation is, this is the precedent, and it has to be done this way all the time.
What would the date be if we got rid of the uh the following year?
If the day that passes.
The day that passes.
Which would be September nineteenth?
Right.
Well, there's this, there's different, there's further implications, there's other implications to that, okay?
But there's specifications every by.
And the implications are that town council has, this is town council's opinion, that technically, when you do a zoning change, if you don't have a building permit thirty days prior to the zoning change, you're not safe. You need a building permit or a special permit. And so we have many projects in the pipeline that do not have a building permit or a special permit. They've already invested a lot of time and money in this. And so to be fair to everybody, that's why that's why she suggested the applicability clause. Not everyone will agree with town council's opinion about what what constitutes when zoning freezes, et cetera, come in. But this is what town council has opined, and I'm I'm telling you what what she's buying.
Then I will agree with her. That's why she has paid the big bucks.
Okay.
I disagree.
One time.
We um, yeah, I think, I think it's fair. I think we're setting ourselves up to have to do this each and everything. And I I don't agree with that, so. Sounds like that's what town council is telling us. Each and every zoning bylaw, we're gonna have to put in
Well, she.
A freeze date and something.
She did recommend it previously for when we went from mixed use to B C N. And you know, when I discussed this with her, she she didn't feel an applicability clause is a fair it's 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 a fair way to deal with.
Because of the amount of projects that are coming in.
Well, no, no, because the projects that
But what, does it matter whether it's one or twenty?
The person, the projects that are in the pipeline right now.
I think that are already.
I mean, I'm gonna tell you.
But does it matter, but it doesn't matter whether it's one or twenty? That's what I'm saying. It shouldn't, if you're saying that this is a fairness thing, then it shouldn't matter how many you're in. You're, what you're saying is that this is oppressive. That's what you're saying, and that's what she's saying. Right? Why, why would it be, okay, give a freeze if there's ten in the pipeline, but if there's only one, then yeah, that guy's screwed, right? So I, that's what I don't get. It feels to me like what we're doing is we're just setting ourselves up that every time we pass the zoning bylaw, we're gonna have to have a hard, fast deadline. I just, I don't agree with that.
Um I think that this, I think that with town meeting coming so early this year, I think we would have had some projects that would have been probably through the permitting process. Um take case in point is your two common driveways tonight. I think they would have been through the permitting process and probably, you know, on their way to, on their way to building permits before, you know, before the town meeting vote. And so I think that, and before we had to, before we had to advertise. But because things are earlier than normal, I I think that that is impacting some of the way that we're proceeding.
And we disagree to think that's just anecdotal, it's just, it's just a timing issue, right? Why isn't there a similar thing for penthouses, right? So um I I just think we're setting ourselves up to say we're gonna have to have a hard and fast freeze with every zoning bylaw change we won't pass.
Quick question, just, I think this kind of goes to what Steve is saying. Um if there is a, if someone comes to us with a uh a common driveway application between June thirtieth and town meeting September nineteen, that's not on our radar now, how do we deal with that? Like, would we deal with that as as if the new bylaw passed, or just, let's see if justice comes in?
I think we restart under the old bylaw, and then there's some, it's, there's some yet to having to redo it.
No, not if they file an application before June thirtieth.
I mean.
Well, no, what I'm saying is like, if they file an application on July fifth, like, and and they start going through the process and somehow they get, they get up on a, they're not on the planning board radar right now, but the application is filed July fifth and, you know, we have to wait for their admission.
That's their problem, that's their problem.
But how, but how we, when they come to the planning board and it's before September nineteenth, it is before town meeting,
Then I would call town council.
would we supposed to treat it as though the law, this change in the bylaw passed?
State law votes, right? I mean, that that's what governs that.
Right.
Right, it's, it's whether there's a special permit or a building permit.
I I would.
According to city, right, so.
Right, I would, I would talk to town council.
So why isn't that sufficient?
I mean, they they might have to redo all the permitting. They might have to re-permit their their common driveway. If a special permit passes, they might have to re-permit it. Or it could take them that long so that it would be after town meeting, and then they would definitely have to have it as a special permit.
Yeah, I just think we're, we're just setting ourselves up to have to do this with everything we we can put in. And if there's already governed with law, that's what we should let go.
Well, I mean, we have, the town is trying to avoid potential lawsuits, and so um this is one way to address that.
Um, you know, people can sue for all kinds of things, right?
Yes, they can, and they do, so.
But if if Cindy's saying there's already existing provisions that the state law addresses, I'm of the opinion we ought to let that be the government thing. That's just my opinion.
You want any public comment?
Love it.
Uh, just for the record, Steve, you're welcome. Um and I I tend to agree with what Steve is saying, that there are requirements out there that we have to file the permits at a certain timeframe. And it's gonna sound strange, if there's confusion to that on town council's part, I think that needs to be clarified before you guys really do much of anything. Because I I I tend to disagree with what she's saying, but she's saying it for a reason, and I don't understand what the reason is. Because I agree with Steve that you gotta file at a certain time. If you file, you're in the pipeline, you should be able to get your permits under the timeline that you filed, even if you change the zoning bylaw. And those protections should all be built into, like you said, the state law. But right now, she's adding confusion. I don't know if it's protected or not protected. And I I clearly believe Karen is saying she, Karen wants to help. She's basically saying if we build through these common driveways, she doesn't want to see us lose them and have to come back and permit them again. Steve's point is they should be all set anyways, so I don't know which way to go unless she can really clarify why she, why that's necessary to have that in there. I I mean, I think we're protected. I mean, we don't have to have a building permit to build a common driveway. So it can't be tied to, you know, you build the driveway. We could take two years to build the houses if we want, we just need to build the driveway. So I I'm kind of at a loss, and I usually understand this stuff, but right now I, my head's kind of spinning because I think everybody wants to achieve the same thing. But I think we're looking at it from a couple different directions, and I think everybody's got to kind of get together and and agree wholeheartedly that, yes, these things are protected if we're gonna approve. I mean, I don't think you guys wanna take the time to approve them and then see us come back and ask us to re-approve them again. So we're all looking for the same result, but we'll come from different directions, I think. So if there's any way to have town council clarify, like Steve said, why we need this exactly, so that we can understand from our perspective and then hopefully help the board figure out that, yeah, maybe maybe we don't need it, or maybe we do need it, but right now, I mean, my head's spinning. And I'm right along the same way. I mean, I think when you file, that that locks you in when you file.
It's like.
If it's so many days before the the adoption.
That's not true. I mean, if you read Brabowski, it's not true.
And.
And that's why we did it before, and that's what Cindy is allying on based on that state law.
So if we can get something from Brabowski, if she can tell us, this is the section in Brabowski that says that you are not protected, and give us a chance to look at that again.
Just go read his book.
Well, well, that's great, but what, I wanna read the whole book to find out what section she was referring to.
It's free, we have a copy of that.
All right, will you pull out the section for me?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. I don't have a problem reading Brabowski, I just wanna see why she's saying it that way. And and then, then it's easier to agree or disagree. Right now, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, but we're all trying to get the same result, that's the thing. I just think we gotta be on the same page and figure out exactly how to make sure that people are protected when they start the permitting process, what are they doing it under, and what's gonna protect them? Whether it's me or anybody else coming to the door, what what's gonna protect the citizens and situate that are paying the money to get these things permitted?
But you don't have an absolute right to protection is is the bottom line.
Well, you.
I mean, you have a zoning bylaw and it lays out, state law lays out what happens if there's a change in the zoning bylaw. The planning board can change the zoning bylaw.
It can change the zoning bylaw, absolutely.
And that's what they're attempting to do.
But if you're in the process, I think you're protected myself, but I'd like to read where it says you're not protected.
I I just don't think we should create another uh component of of what's already been litigated and been created in state law, right?
But unless it's necessary, uh unless it's necessary, but I, again.
Why should it create something else? A lot of, you know, why shouldn't it be necessary if it's already been litigated and it's already been uh settled in state law, and it is what it is, right?
Again, I think we're adding confusion. I just got to say.
I'm not sure every aspect has been litigated. And so I mean, every case, every, every case is different.
I'm saying that there's, there's a set of rules and requirements around it, right?
I mean, so every case can be different, and you might have to litigate
Of course you can, that's.
certain things to get the facts that you want.
I I don't have, I don't have a dog in this not room, or I just think we should, you know, let the the current state law be the guiding factor.
Could we get clarification?
As opposed to try to manipulate it.
I'll ask for one. I'll ask for clarification. I'll ask for one. I'll ask for clarification here, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have Brabowski, so if it's, she'll tell me exactly what she's talking about. I'll, I'll take the time to look at it myself and confirm by some other people as well. But again, I think we're all just trying to protect the people that are in the process. So that's good thing. But back to the regular subject here, how much of a workshop are you gonna have regarding the common driveways? And can I comment in general on the common driveway change?
This is, this is our.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Um, and, and Greg and I did go back and take a look at this in his office. And the comments that I had made originally when this came up about adding percentages of grades and things like that, I was correct that roadways can be nine percent. You're looking at doing driveways at seven percent. If it's a common driveway. If we don't do a common driveway, there is no percentage on two single driveways. So I, I think you guys really need to understand that these common driveways are doing what they're supposed to do. They're minimizing the pavement, which you talked about on one Greg had in here earlier on Elm Street, rather than two driveways going in. So in order to get the, the developers or, or just residents in town that have the ability to use this, I think you still gotta keep it as simple as you can because we're just making everything extremely difficult. And the purpose of the common driveway is to not have us come in with subdivision roads and have these small driveways, whether they serve two or serve three houses. Once they're done, they, they look great. I mean, they really do. It's much better than looking at a subdivision road going in there for a three lot subdivision, which that's what people will be forced to do. And unfortunately, the amount of money they're gonna spend on the infrastructure to do a roadway right now is almost the same as what, you know, a common driveway is what a road used to cost us. I mean, we, we were doing, and we'd spend about three hundred and twenty-five bucks a foot to put in a road. A common driveway now is probably three hundred and twenty-five bucks a foot, if not more, with all the other requirements from stormwater and all that that go along with it. Um, we, we just talked about the one, uh, on First Parish Road. That drainage that we have to put in there is equivalent to what we do on a subdivision for the most part. And it's just a driveway for two houses. So I just don't wanna see the board make it so onerous that we just decide not to do common driveways and then you guys don't like the results and we come back with something different. So again, it's only my personal recommendation, take it, do what you want with it. I really think that you should not necessarily table the idea of talking about common driveways, but have some more workshops, try and get all of us together and figure out really what to do with the common driveway bylaw so it's usable and incorporate some of our concerns with your concerns. I don't think you can do it for this meeting that's gonna happen extremely fast, I guess. I don't know what the date is, but to do it right, to do it right, I think you should bring it to the annual town meeting. And I, I apologize Karen, but I just, you know, if you're gonna change it, I'd like to see it changed so it's really a usable document, that's all.
I think it is a usable document, you just don't like.
Yeah, I can get a desk.
Why, why do you have a driveway at seven percent? Can you explain that? I mean, if anyone could explain it, that's great, but we're both wrote it down.
Because the, the board, the board, the board thought that ten percent was too steep. So if the board wants to change it to be more in line with the subdivision regulations, which is correct. You have a street, you can have a street at nine percent.
So if you're looking at a full-blown subdivision road at nine percent, who cares if a driveway's at ten percent? You know, I mean, it's, the difference in this, you, you're really gonna understand the differences in, that are being proposed. And whether they make sense or don't make sense, that's all. I just don't wanna see people not use the common driveway by law. That's, that's where I'm coming from. And Greg might have some comments, but I just think you need some time to really think about what you wanna do with the common driveway, that's all.
Some of, some of the things I've seen with the common driveways that I've done, I mean, this isn't a bylaw that's used all that often. I've been in business in situ thirteen years. I think I've permitted five common driveways during that time. You've seen a couple of them more frequently, but these are not that many months here.
I did all theirs here.
Yeah, there, there aren't that many, but when you do use them, you know, it's a place where you're putting in typically two houses where you would have two driveways anyways. So it's not like the, the project I was in here earlier for in Elm Street. The common driveway is not approved, I'm still gonna have the driveway to the house out back. They can go build that tomorrow without any emergency fire department turnaround, let any sign off on that, without any comments from you, without any screaming to the neighbors. There's no required, so they go build it tomorrow, effectively.
Overhead electric?
Yeah, overhead electric, all, all that. No site distance review.
We're not saying that's a good thing, we're just saying that's a good behavior, right?
But that's, that's the reality, and so.
That's not our, that's not our objective is to say, let's go to the lowest common denominator here.
No, I mean, there's a type of frontage lot right next door.
No, so. I, I appreciate finishing my, the rest of my comment, throwing out here. But, you know, once we add that second house into it, you know, it doesn't really become that much different of an application. And, you know, the purpose of special permits, I think that's the thing that I'm looking at with your change being the biggest impact, is that all common driveways now are gonna require a special permit as opposed to be something by right. There can already be a driveway there. If we add a second house to it, why does that become so onerous that it falls under the guise now of special permit? You know, in zoning, there's by right and then there's special permit, which is typically for an offensive use that could be permitted in an area because it's necessary. Perfect example would be like a gas station, typically an offensive use, but you know what, we need gas for our cars. So we're gonna permit it somewhere, but we're gonna condition maybe the hours, we're gonna condition the lighting. What makes the use of a driveway that can lawfully exist for one house, the minute I add a second car to it, a second house to it, makes it so onerous that it falls under that special permit? We should be promoting these things. Reduces impervious area, reduces, uh, lot coverages, reduces disturbed area. And now it puts it in front of you guys for full review, it puts it in front of fire department for their review. They should be promoted. It shouldn't fall under the guise of a special permit where with a special permit, I could comply with all of the requirements in here, the slopes of the driveway, the list. And if one person on the board doesn't like it for whatever reason, it's, it's dead.
Not necessarily.
Yes, you need unanimous, unanimous approval with a special permit.
But you don't need a force.
But not.
Force.
Force.
So if two people don't like the way that it works and it meets all the requirements, you still can say no. He, either way, I mean, the point that he's really making is if we meet all the requirements, we should be entitled to it. And, I mean, lay out the requirements, okay? That's it, lay out the requirements and we'll meet the requirements. But let's make those requirements so that they're usable for people. And again, cohesive, it's not a special permit. You know, cohesive, they tell you this is how you build it. You, you dig it out, you got twelve inches of, of gravel underneath it, you pave it X amount wide. If you add an extra lot, you add another couple feet to it, but they just lay it out and it's not in a subdivision control lot. And they just say if you do this, you get a permit. But the planning board gets a look at it to make sure that the plans are accurate and all that, but it's not a special permit. And there's other towns that have them that are not necessarily a special permit as well. It's, you know, what do you say to a client when you, you, you know, putting these plans together now is not inexpensive and you guys can see that from the content of the plans. And to come in and ask for special permission on something like this, uh, you know, just as a special permit is, it sounds funny, it's more onerous than a subdivision. If we come to you with a subdivision and it meets all the requirements, you approve it. You have to. It's not a special permit, it's a subdivision. Most of the stuff that you see, we don't do cookie cutter subdivisions. We try to come in with a special permit to use it, but we're at the mercy of the board when we do that. And it's getting more difficult to, to get these permits.
All right, may I?
Sure.
I think that my feeling, and I, I understand where you're coming from, I really do. And I think what's gonna happen here started with, believe it or not, the zoning board appeals. When the zoning board appeals, it fifty-foot punishment to forty-two Holm Street, which unless a common driveway went in, it had been made a non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
And that, and then when the common driveway finally came in, the turnaround made absolutely no sense whatsoever, but it fixed it. And that was my issue with all of this. That, I mean, I look at the, the common driveway, whatever, on Country Way that used to be mine from Woollett's house. And there's a little house to, to the right.
Yeah.
And, you know, but that seems to have worked out beautifully.
Yeah.
But then I look at the common driveway that's down on, so Cardy's down on First Parish Road. That is one big nightmare for the people that live next to one house.
I know they have some difficult people living there.
They have no idea. But I understand the special permit would not prevent that. I understand that.
Yeah.
I think that we all need to, I need to figure out a way to try to convince people. I think common driveways are a good thing. I do. I'm just am very concerned about the turnarounds. I'm very concerned about in tandem parking. It just doesn't work for me.
We mean tandem parking.
We had one, it was one fifteen, um, Grove Street.
Yeah.
And that was tandem. And no, you guys fixed it and so that's fine. But why do you have to go through all these machinations when you should know?
Well, if the issue is that the board wants to fix the turnaround to say that it, the turnaround has to be separate from any portion of the driveway where somebody's gonna be near a house or something like that, then you can make that change. That's, that's not a huge deal. It's, that's not what it says now. What it says now is if the fire chief says it's okay, it's okay. If you wanna, if you wanna make that separate so that we've gotta come in with another turnaround, like we said earlier, it just means we have to pave another area, which is a little more disturbance. It's still better than two driveways going in. So that's a change.
I think we can live with that change. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think if you're gonna make changes to the bylaws, some of the things that I've heard recently are, you know, why's the easement stop here? You're looking at Elm Street. Oh, I almost think that the common driveway should be clearly defined in the bylaws, the portion of the driveway that services the two houses. At the end of that easement, the person that lives out front, they don't need rights up to the garage of the house out there. That's not common driveway, in my opinion. It's common driveway up to the point where, where the two driveways split. And then it becomes, you know, exclusive use driveway, you know, private driveway for each of those. But we need to define what the common portion of the driveway is. We need to define what the length.
Which where, where each homeowner accesses over it.
That is the rights to pass and repass for both of them.
That's right.
But the back house usually, because obviously there's one house that's usually behind the other one, okay? So the first one that's in the front doesn't necessarily have to have anything on, on the one I just did, right? Tonight, you shouldn't have to go back three, three hundred and nine feet, I guess, with a common driveway when two hundred and eighty feet of it is just going to one house.
Yes, but it's on, it's on one property.
Well, I guess, that's so, but it, but it give me a private easement.
Yes, I, I lived, I lived on a common driveway.
Yeah.
I was the front house.
Yeah.
The person in the back didn't need nothing.
Okay.
Couldn't buy and force it. We ended up piling it, we ended up paving it, they didn't pay any attention. So the common driveway for me has to go all the way from front to back and that's from personal experience.
Okay, so does a person in the back now pay?
I don't live there anymore, I moved.
Okay, but, but it probably didn't change that. I mean, the common driveway agreement certainly can set out who's responsible today.
Thank you.
And Karen does a great job with the common driveway agreements. I think we got them pretty tight now and, and all the things that have been added over the number of years, we're tightening up exactly what, what we leave behind because we only control it while we permit it and build it and then it goes to the homeowners. Like any development that we do, we lose control after we sell the stuff off. So we don't mind having these conditions put on there, but we don't have to administer those conditions. I mean, they're watched by Karen, they're watched by the building inspector and they're watched by the people that live on the common driveways because they're the ones that are gonna complain if someone's not doing something. But to Greg's point, the common driveway doesn't have to go all the way. There can be a private easement off the end of one of these to get to somebody's house. Or you can pull the property line all the way down to where you want the common driveway to stop, but that's ridiculous. You don't, you don't have to do that. And we've had two or three of these, uh, recently where, yeah, it probably made sense just to have that be a shorter driveway, incorporate if you want the turnaround to be at the end of that common portion, so it's not right up front. If we have to have a separate turnaround, that's gonna push it, say, behind the first house. And then you have a turnaround, but you should be able to have an easement off the end of that going out into the woods to another house. That's what we think is the purpose of the common driveway. So that we don't have to run one beside it all the way from up in the woods all the way to up front. So, you know, and, uh, my point is I just think, I would hope that you guys might wait on this and let's go back and forth a little bit with this and see if we can, can get this figured out. And I don't think that, I don't have any others that I'm working on at all that are gonna be coming in short. These are, the ones we're doing right now is pretty much it, I mean, for us, I'm concerned.
There's one more application coming in early next week.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
And can you, that incorporates some of the stuff that we, we've already talked about?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I mean, I would, I would just ask the board to think of potentially put that off and, and again, I don't mind spending, spending time trying to help to craft it the best that we can, that's all.
Oh, I think some of your research differs from some of our research.
Okay.
I mean, we, uh, Patty's done a lot of research.
Yeah.
And she found multiple towns, most towns in the Commonwealth of the eight, of the twenty-one she looked at who had common driveways, eighteen were by special permit.
Okay.
So most of them are by special permit, most of them are four hundred feet long. And most of the common driveways in situ have been less than four hundred feet. There's just a couple that are more than four hundred feet.
And most of them actually require that you have turnarounds every seventy-five feet.
Yeah, they do a little bump out on the end. Yeah, we can do a little bump out on, on the side of it if you want, just means a little more pavement. That, that's not a big, I'd rather have it be a narrower driveway and have a little bump out if you had to pass somebody. Because you're gonna have less pavement. Again, we're trying to do less pavement and, and, you know, and achieve that because we got so much in the water resource protection district that the drainage is what kills us. It's not necessarily just the driveway, but it's.
But not away, that, that much we do, we got a million lot of ways.
Yes.
What we need to do is protect the owner that we have, because where I live, I mean, I can see common driveways everywhere in West End. I mean, just, I mean, I can see them propped up everywhere and people who live in West End should know enough.
Well, we've, I mean, I did, I did the first common driveways out in the West End. And, and they're far better than having individual driveways
Oh, yeah.
for that type of development because there are larger parcels of land and you could drive down, uh, right off the end of First Parish Road, you get into Norwell and you can take a look almost directly across the street from the end of First Parish and they got two driveways going out to each house, okay? And there's a cross between the two of them because they didn't have a common driveway by law. So they just ran two full driveways out and the neighbors just gave each other a cross easement, so they drive in on the, on the right and drive out on the right and they got a common driveway. And, and the town couldn't do anything about it because it's two single driveways. So they can't stop somebody from paving a section and letting somebody drive across it. So if we're, if we're regulated to four hundred feet, I guarantee you at the end of that four hundred feet, you're gonna see two driveways going off the end of it. It, it just doesn't, like I said before, you're tying your own hands on stuff that you should be able to say, yeah, we can, we can do this. Here's the regulations, this is what you're allowed to do as a matter of right. If you wanna waiver from that and you wanna go more than four hundred, come to us for a special permit. If you wanna do something different, come in and ask us for a waiver or a special, you know, special permit or waiver. If it's in the zoning bylaw, it can't really be a waiver. I think it becomes, you know, a variance.
Other towns have it as about a hundred feet.
What?
Other towns have it as about a hundred feet.
Yeah.
The building commissioner in some of the towns, if it's a hundred feet or less, they can issue it for it. But I mean, that's, that we just, the planning board has to consider what warrants for situating.
Absolutely.
We've regularly done them in Norwell with a common driveway, which doesn't require a special permit. It's just roof by the building inspector up to a length of a hundred feet. We go in ninety-nine feet and then we have two driveways that continue to go back. We've done that in multiple occasions over there and that's what you're looking at, exactly what happened in here.
We don't want that.
And we don't want that.
We don't want that.
A common driveway alone is four hundred feet, you can't have three houses on that driveway.
By special permit?
By special permit.
By special permit.
Right, but as a matter of right, you can go in and get it a hundred feet and then do two driveways. So the point that we're making is let's get a length that is gonna work and then if, if we needed something and came to the board and said, geez, I really need six hundred feet instead of four hundred feet, you would have the opportunity to say, we don't wanna give that to you. We're gonna say, okay, we'll just do two driveways.
Well, subdivision says six hundred feet, we do the same.
For a road.
For a road.
Yeah.
So why not six hundred feet?
And I'm okay with even less than that. If you're saying the average driveway is less than four, or four hundred feet or less, I'd be okay with saying, you know, as a matter of right, you could do one four hundred feet. But if you want more, come to us, and we need to see the plan and see why we would wanna approve that, if there's a way to orchestrate that.
No.
It already says that.
Says a thousand.
Says a thousand.
Yes, thousand feet.
No, for special permits, right?
For three, for three lots, three lots, you use special permit for any three lot common driveway, even if it's a hundred feet. So for two lots, if it's less than five hundred feet, you can do it as a, well, as a matter of right with a site plan in here, which is what we've done for.
Five hundred, that's, that's, it's a same, same difference.
Yeah. Yeah, so my, yeah, but my point is just, they should, some of them should be allowed as a matter of right if we can meet the criteria. And, and that's kind of the way we're doing it now, but if you wanna change the criteria, then we really should get together and figure out exactly what that criteria should be.
Yeah, I used to be all good, I don't really go to young jobs like tell you like to build your house.
I, I get that, but.
But yeah, I, I, I know what you're saying to me, but it's kind of like, but we, we appreciate your health. And I, I certainly feel like I think personally, I would like to see common driveways by a special permit because I think that we run into a lot of problems, and we, we seem to keep coming down a fault all the time. Um, I know anybody else from New Systems don't find it especially onerous. Um, we're talking to two developers, so to, we, we know that you're going for the best part for your client. We, I totally get that. The problem is, is that I don't like a thousand feet, I think that's too old to be going. It's any, or either, that would be very obvious, if you could do it down in the west end, can't do it up, we have a stack of three A. But I think, I agree with it with five hundred feet and not four hundred feet, but definitely not a thousand feet. But why, why do we need a special permit? Because we seem to be running into so many problems with the common driveways.
Yes, right.
So, I guess, what are the problems and how does the special permit solve it? If it's a problem like down on the Zaccari one that was referenced, where we have two homeowners that literally hate each other and have issues, how does a special permit solve the problems that you're experiencing?
Doesn't, it doesn't.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Doesn't.
So why do we need it?
So what problem does it solve?
It's the criteria.
It's the criteria, it's the design criteria that you wanna be focused in. Not changing the permitting, it's come drive, it's been in place twenty years.
At least.
At least, it's the design criteria you wanna focus on, not on the permitting aspect of it.
We're, we're trying to work with you guys, obviously, yeah, we are developers, but believe me,
I know.
I helped write a lot of zoning bylaws in different towns and all that. And, you know, we're, we're trying to help you guys get something that's gonna work, not necessarily just for us, but for the citizens that wanna do them, that's all.
And so most of the design criteria that was added is very, is, take it from Norwell. Right from Norwell's law.
Okay.
I mean, except, you know, the length, I mean, the design criteria.
Yeah.
I mean, so the length, Norwell has four hundred feet, you know, so whatever it seems to be, you have to decide.
Four hundred is Norwell as a matter of right?
You have to decide what you want for the length.
Yeah.
And the other criteria that you keep complaining about is you have to decide about the grade. Do you have to, do you wanna put a grade criteria on it? And if you don't, that's, I mean, most of the other stuff is just tweaks on what was already existing.
Right.
So what's the grade that, that you put about ten percent? I, I don't like it, I don't think that's, five thirty-three percent.
What's the grade that you can't live with?
Forty-three percent.
That's right, what can't you live with? Have you gone on driveways that are fifteen percent, you wouldn't even know.
Yes, you would.
I, I, I.
You wouldn't know the difference.
I mean, the board commented, you thought that the grade of the portion of five thirty-three was too steep. That, that was your comment.
Okay, now.
And so part of that is ten percent. And the fire department doesn't like ten percent, but they said it was just a small portion, so they said, okay.
Now, when you asked that question, can I clarify that?
You need to like ten percent.
Have any of you driven up five thirty-three at the ten percent level to say that it's unsafe? It doesn't exist, it doesn't exist, it's on pinkler, it's a number, ten percent, okay, it's a number.
I'm not scared.
Have any of you been to Paul Maravito's office before in Norwell? Have you driven from the back of his building up to the street?
Yeah, that's a little bit scary.
Come on, I do it every day. It's, it's, that's your ten percent, right when you pull it out of pause. It's done by multiple people all the time, every single day since the building's been out. It's, it's, that's not a, if it's a road, it's a whole different story. This is a driveway to somebody's house. You know, I don't, I don't, not necessarily.
All right, nothing to reason, because I'm walking, sure, it's not asking.
All right.
Because I'm not, so your, your, your suggestion, what you tell us is that we need to agree with the design criteria.
And it's on.
If you wanna say ten percent on a driveway, if somebody has to be more, they could come to you and ask for the waiver on that or the special permit or whatever. But once you have the criteria for one that will be ninety-nine percent of the driveways coming in, this is what we want. If somebody needs something different, leave yourselves open to be able to look at that and grant it if it makes sense. Or you say, no, doesn't make sense, we're not gonna grant that. I mean, so we're still trying to keep it two, two thresholds. One is a matter of right, and if we go over what the criteria is that we can come up with, we gotta really come in and say, this is why we need to do this, you either like it, you don't like it, and you have the choice of saying no if we go beyond that criteria. Or you're open to say yes if you think it makes sense.
We need to, this is something for us to choose.
We're not gonna close this, I.
No, no.
No, and I'm.
There's a certain criteria.
So I, I, well, one thing I would say too, should the planning board, because we've kind of taken this up as a cost, I'm believing it, and we've talked about that at night, about do we put this in town meeting? That's kind of watered the brain, I think we probably will still pursue this for the town meeting. I mean, I can't speak to the other members, it's my feeling. I mean, since you're exhibiting a willingness to work it out, I mean, if you can find time or schedule it, I'd strongly submit, I would strongly suggest you submit written comments, even, even redline comments to this. We can run this, you know, that we can all read on our own time and think about it, because.
What next?
We can put a base, a base.
Because that would be, that would be very beneficial to the actual rulemaking. You know, without tabling until the following, I think it would be probably work together and then try and hash it out at ten twenty or ten ten.
All right, so let me tell you what the schedule is. A legal ad went to the paper, it, it gets published on the thirtieth and the seventh for the public hearing on the fourteenth. Okay, so that, that's cast in stone. Then I would imagine, you know, we've allowed for continued public hearing on the twenty-eighth. Advisory wants to know where we stand at some point by the twenty-eighth first, we have all those people who we have to talk to. But until the warrant is actually printed, you can change your mind. So you can, you can decide to not go through with it up until the warrant goes to print.
And we have a placeholder.
Oh, yeah, you, you have placeholders, you have placeholders for your three articles. So, but they, they did tell me they wanted the final wording by July first.
I think that's outrageous.
But.
That's ridiculous.
But, I mean, I said that a public hearing is after that, so, yeah.
I, yeah.
That's nuts.
There's no purpose for a public hearing if they want the language that.
Right.
So, but I can, I can, what I have right now and tell, that, that's great, it's all working, all working.
Such a shame.
Let's go vote on that.
So if you, if you, let's hope now, let's hope we can have a public.
Yeah.
So if you want to face this document and if you can rely on it, it's supposed to be relying it, and send it back to us, and give us something to think, plus we have something specific to think about it the next.
The next one will be the public hearing.
Right, and then, right, and then we can honor our time review, review it on a more granular, detailed level before, because you know how these meetings are, that we're gonna get your whole body.
We'll, we'll be the only ones sitting there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you're, you're privately gonna submit comments.
Anyways, so.
Anyways. But, yeah, on a broader level, because of the people that are listening, you know, anybody can bring stuff that, so.
Yeah. Right, right.
Hey, here we go, Seth, if you wanna do anything, let us know. Uh, I, I appreciate the fact that you guys will let us take a stab at this and try and get the base for a common driveway by right. And then over and above that, it's gonna be up to mercy of you guys if you wanna extend anything beyond that. I, I really do, I appreciate it, because I like these common driveways, I mean, I've done a ton of them.
And appreciate the fact that what you give to us, we may not like.
Yeah, we, we can certainly, we can agree to disagree, absolutely, but if it was a total disagreement, you tell us not to do it.
And that's. That's right.
So, you know, I think it, it works right now, but I understand Ian's concern is the turnaround. That's the, that's the concern is the turnaround.
You're right.
That's the, that's the biggest thing that I'm getting out of this. And if we could find a way to get around that by saying the turnaround can't be part of the drive to the house or near the house, or, right, something to that effect, it has to be a separate turnaround.
Or the garage or the S R.
Uh, I mean, I like the fact that we can actually make them narrower. I, I kind of disagree with, uh, Mr. Dunn, not, I don't say Mr. Dunn, it's not Mr. Dunn, but with Al Elliott who was saying, well, the common driveway has to be sixteen feet wide, and it actually says that the fire chief can let it be fourteen or twelve if it's two houses, okay? And I think that makes a lot of sense, because if you go in up in the woods like Greg's doing on his or I'm doing on mine for one house, twelve is adequate for a single family home, that's in the fire protection code. So now Mark Donovan says, yeah, I don't have a problem if it's twelve going to the one house. So, and it's up to them, you know, that's not something that's up to the planning board, that's up to the fire department. We had the problem with Al Elliott on whether it's sixteen or not sixteen, okay? In all reality, that's what drove Chris Horn's driveway, that drove the driveway. And I thought for sure Al would have let us do the twelve, and it was Mark Donovan that said, I don't have a problem with twelve feet going to the second house. That's why that happened the way it did, we didn't wanna do it that way, but.
I think we need to stop, stop with the names, okay? Because it's not, it's, we shouldn't be picking out personality names.
Or the, the change in the fire department, how's that? I wouldn't go with names, but when we start dealing with one person that says one thing and somebody else tells us something different.
You know.
I, I think it's becoming somewhat redundant and they retire.
That's fine.
And.
If you could.
I'm going to Florida, I gotta go.
Nice, if you could, if you could get your comments back to Sherry, you can distribute them.
I, no, I, I would like the comments by July, by July seventh at the latest,
Okay, yes, okay.
because they have to be distributed. You said you were gonna get comments before to us, and you didn't. And so I, I'm giving you a hard, a hard get by on July seventh, so that they, that we can actually distribute them to the board.
And that's all, right, it's.
And the rea, the, the reason we didn't get the hard comments to you this time is because when, once we took a look at it, it was, it wasn't in a position where we could do that.
I understand, yeah, yeah.
Now, if we got some direction, now I think we can actually put it together. I will be away from tomorrow morning until, uh, July first. Soon as I get back, we, we can get together and try and.
Just taking a few of the witnesses.
My computer's gonna be with me, because I think I'm gonna be on the permanent conservation commission hopefully Tuesday night.
Hopefully, yeah.
We'll wait and see what happens.
Well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you guys for everything tonight, I thought it was a pretty busy day.
Hi.
Hi, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks very much.
Mary, any questions?